A lot of control devices for it. My guess is that I touched my eye after handling someone.
And I think that's how we got it. The instructor, pardon me, that's it.
Thank you all for joining us this evening and welcome to the public hearing on the New York State Climate Action Council Draft Scoping Plan. My name is Doreen Harris. I'm the President and CEO of the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, or NYSERTA, and I'm here today as co-chair of New York's Climate Action Council. I'd like to introduce my co-chair, Commissioner Basil Sagos.
Doreen, Doreen, can you hear me? Doreen, 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 thank you. Hi, everyone. Basil Sagos, Commissioner of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Proud to be here today as co-chair of the Climate Action Council. I'll just say a few quick words up front. First of all, thank you to SUNY ESF President Mahoney for opening your doors to us today in this beautiful facility. It's great to be in person with all of you, the public. And I want to thank also my fellow Climate Action Council members, those who are not here as well. In addition to the hundreds of staff who put in an enormous amount of work on this over the last two years to produce the scoping plan, which is an extraordinary document. I'm sure you all have had a chance to read it. You'll be, of course, hearing about some of it today, and we look forward to this very important phase, which is now turning the microphone over to you and hearing from the public here in Syracuse and really all across the state during this very important public scoping process. So just a couple of quick points up front, really one quick point to reiterate what this is. This is a public hearing in regards to the scoping plan, so not in regards to any regulation, proposed regulation, or any law that may be proposed or being discussed. This is purely on the Climate Action Council's draft scoping plan. So we look forward to hearing your comments on that today. Again, welcome, everybody, and thank you to my fellow members, and especially to Doreen for all the work over the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask each of the members of the Climate Action Council to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Thank you, Doreen. No. Thank you, Doreen. Thank you, Doreen, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Donaty Carolis. I am President of National Fuel Gas Distribution Corporation. We're a Western New York utility headquartered in Buffalo, and I'm a member of the council appointed by the Assembly, and I'm looking forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bob Howarth. I'm a faculty member at Cornell University. I'm a member of the council appointed by the Democratic majority in the Assembly and very pleased to be here tonight to hear what you all have to say on the scoping plan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Iwanowitz, and I am an appointee by the Assembly Majority Leader, Carl Hasty. Good to be with you all tonight.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marie Teres Dominguez. I serve as Commissioner of the New York State Department of Transportation, serve as a Governor's appointee to the Climate Action Council and co-chair of the Transportation Advisory Panel. So thank you all very much for coming and sharing your comments. We're looking forward to hearing directly from you all today.
Thank you. And again, thank you all for being here this evening. We are thrilled with your interest in our draft scoping plan and for your attendance at tonight's hearing. We certainly are looking forward to hearing from the public on the work of the council that has encompassed over two years together and is reflected in the draft scoping plan that we'll be talking about tonight. This hearing is one of eight in-person and two virtual hearings being conducted across New York State to ensure that businesses, residents, and interested parties have an opportunity to comment on this draft scoping plan, which was released on December 30, 2021. Tonight's meeting will be livestreamed on the Climate Act website, and additionally, a stenographer will take record of any verbal comments tonight. All comments received here today will be considered by the Climate Action Council as it finalizes its scoping plan by January 1, 2023. Written comments are also being accepted through June 10, 2022, and additional details can be found on the Climate Act website at climate.ny.gov. Written and oral comments will be weighed equally by the council. So with that, I will turn the hearing over to our facilitators to run through the structure of tonight's hearing.
Tonight, we are going to first hear an overview of the draft Climate Act and Climate Act Plan, excuse me, and we will then be opening up for comments. I believe that those who had registered to comment should have a comment card, and I'll go over the format for that. If anyone is here who wants to comment, who didn't register to comment and doesn't have a card, registration will be open until we close tonight, and you're welcome to go out to the table and get a card so that you can register and speak. I'll go over the rules of order and the approach that we're going to take to make sure that everyone has a chance to share their point of view as soon as we finish hearing about a 15-minute presentation about the draft Climate Action Plan from Sarah Osgood. Sarah, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Nora. And thank you to all of those that are in the audience and those that are viewing remotely for joining us here today. My name is Sarah Osgood, and I'm Executive Director of the Climate Action Council. I have a very brief slide deck to run through that provides a little bit of context on the Climate Act, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which I'll also refer to as the Climate Act, as well as the process for developing and the key findings that are in the draft scoping plan. Next slide, please. The Climate Act established very ambitious and necessary nation-leading greenhouse gas reduction requirements and set them in statute for the first time in New York. Achieving these targets positions New York to meet the internationally established goals called for by the scientific community. The Act empowers every New Yorker to fight climate change while improving our daily lives through new job opportunities, improved public health, and more resilient communities and infrastructure. In addition to climate leadership, the other central component of the law is its requirements for our communities, most notably those that have been historically overburdened and could be in the future as our changing climate takes stronger hold. Next slide, please. In addition to setting the emissions reductions and technology targets, the Climate Act established a Climate Action Council tasked with developing a scoping plan identifying how the state would meet its greenhouse gas limits. It called for the draft to be issued by the end of 2021, followed by a public comment period, which we're currently in, prior to the issuance of a finalized scoping plan at the end of this year. So we're in the middle of this process currently. The purpose of this hearing and the others that we're holding is to hear directly from New Yorkers their feedback on the plan. The feedback that's received during this public comment period will be considered by the council as it works to finalize the scoping plan, and then, once the plan is finalized, will then move into the process of establishing regulations, which will also have comment periods associated with them to ensure that the Climate Act goals are met. The scoping plan takes a holistic, economy-wide view of New York's greenhouse gas emissions. The law also outlined a process for identifying the strategies to achieve the reduction that included a number of advisory panels and working groups, and ultimately comprised over 100 individual experts providing sector-specific recommendations to the council. It also identified some key factors and impacts for the council to consider, including climate justice, job creation, health benefits, and a benefit cost analysis. Next slide, please. I think it's also helpful to see visually what the Climate Act requires for emissions reductions over time. Here, we see a snapshot of our current greenhouse gas emissions by sector on the left and where our overall emissions need to get to over time on the right, so quite a dramatic reduction over the next two decades. For current emissions, using the new emissions accounting under the Climate Act, you can see that buildings in yellow and transportation in blue are now the greatest contributors and amount to over 50% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions, mostly in the form of carbon dioxide emissions from the combustion of fuels. Electricity generation, shown in green, is a smaller piece of the pie now, and contribution from the waste sector in orange has increased. Next slide, please. The draft scoping plan was released on December 30 of last year, and it's available on the Climate Act website, climate.ny.gov. It's the result of 18 meetings of the council where they received information, recommendations, and feedbacks from a variety of experts, advisory panels, and working groups, as well as analytical modeling of the overall cost and benefits associated with the recommendations contained within the plan. The advisory panels and working groups also conducted inclusive processes in the development of the recommendations that they ultimately advanced to the council, and collectively they held over 90 public meetings where their work was presented and discussed, where they sought perspectives from other panels, experts, the Climate Justice Working Group, the public, and other stakeholders. The draft also includes the new emissions accounting dictated by the Climate Act, so upstream emissions associated with fossil fuels from out of state are included, and the benefit cost analysis includes the DEC value of carbon, which was also established pursuant to the Climate Act. Finally, the recommendations in the draft scoping plan also form the basis of scenario modeling work to show the impact of strategies across sectors. Three mitigation scenarios were modeled with varying levels of pressure on specific policy levers that represent potential mixes of strategies and level of ambition required to meet the state's goals. Next slide, please. I'll get into the various scenarios in a moment, but several key strategies emerged as fundamental to achieving the greenhouse gas emissions limits across all scenarios. So those include energy efficiency, transition from fossil fuels to electrification in buildings, zero emissions electricity, transportation electrification, enhancement of transit and smart growth, and reduced vehicle miles traveled, maximizing carbon sequestration in New York's forest and land, a transition to low global warming potential refrigerants and enhanced refrigerant management, elimination of fugitive methane emissions across the waste, agriculture, and energy sectors, and a diverse portfolio of solutions in the industry sector, including energy efficiency, electrification, and limited and strategic use of low-carbon fuels and carbon capture technologies for certain industrial applications. Next slide, please. So the scenarios that were modeled all meet or exceed the greenhouse gas limits identified in the law, and they require transformative levels of effort in all areas of the economy and also represent high electrification. But as I mentioned before, they represent distinct worldviews based on the feedback from the council and the Climate Justice Working Group. So first, I'll call out what is common to all of them. All reaches zero emissions power sector by 2040. All require enhancement and expansion of transit options and reduction of vehicle miles traveled. All require significant levels of electrification and energy efficiency. All require increased methane mitigation in agriculture and waste sectors. And all have end-use load flexibility built in to help manage the electric grid reliably. So now to highlight where the scenarios differ. Scenario two, which we call the strategic use of low-carbon fuels, includes the use of bioenergy that's derived from biogenic waste, agriculture, and forest residues, as well as limited purpose-grown biomass, as well as green hydrogen for difficult-to-electrify applications. Scenario three, we call an accelerated transition away from combustion, and this scenario has a very limited role for bioenergy and hydrogen combustion, replacing it instead with even additional accelerated electrification of buildings and transportation. And finally, scenario four represents a beyond 85% reduction in emissions. This scenario includes both accelerated electrification and targeted use of low-carbon fuels. Next slide, please. We completed a comprehensive benefit-cost analysis, as was required by the law, for the scenarios that I just described. And importantly, we found that the cost of inaction exceeds the cost of action by more than $90 billion. So in other words, the actions described in the draft scoping plan offer significant benefit when accounting for the avoided greenhouse gas emissions and improvement to public health as called for in the Climate Act. It's also important to mention that there are additional significant benefits and opportunities to create hundreds of thousands of jobs. That concludes my presentation on the overview of the draft scoping plan, but I do have a couple of slides that I do want to cover that has information about the comment period here and in a related comment period. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Draft criteria developed by the Climate Justice Working Group for identifying disadvantaged communities was released last month, and the draft criteria is currently out for public comment. The draft criteria will guide the equitable implementation of the Climate Act, which requires that the state direct resources to ensure that disadvantaged communities receive at least 35% with a goal of 40% of the overall benefits of spending on clean energy and energy efficiency programs. Comments on the draft criteria will be accepted through July 7 of this year, and there are several ways to provide comment, which you can see on the screen here. There are also public education sessions being There are also public education sessions being offered, and so I’d encourage folks to visit the Climate Act website to check out more information on these. And finally, my last slide, just another reminder of the public comment period for the draft scoping plan. This afternoon is the fifth of 10 hearings that the Council is holding across the state and virtually. You can also submit written comments via a form on the Climate Act website, by email to scopingplan@nicerta.ny.gov, or by US Mail, and the comment period for this is open through June 10th. And again, I would say, please visit the Climate Act website at climate.ny.gov for additional information. And with that, I’ll hand it back to you, Nora.
Thank you, Sarah. So, tonight is a hearing, and at a hearing, we want to hear what people have to say. You’re going to hear ideas that you really agree with, and you’re going to hear some things that you really don’t agree with. What I would appreciate is if we are courteous and listen to each other. That’s what a hearing is for. So, during the hearing, the Council is not going to answer questions or engage in a discussion or a debate. This is a time to hear the comments that come in from the public. So, for those of you who received a card, just be aware, we put everyone, we put you into groups, and we’re going to have groups on in even and odd, and the purpose of those groups is not to rate anyone or to rank anyone’s comments, it’s just to get things organized. Your registration, your group is based on when you registered, so it all goes in the order in which you registered online, so it flows from there. Could I have my facilitators? So, we have Sean and we have Caroline, who are going to facilitate tonight. They are going to hold the mic for you. We are still preserving health, and so they’re gloved, and they’re going to hold the mics, so please don’t take it from them. Each speaker is going to have two minutes to speak. We’ll have a timer. At about a minute and 30, a minute and 40, whoever you’re standing with is going to let you know that it’s time to wrap up. If I hear that you’re going significantly over two minutes, I will ask you to submit your comments in writing. There are lots of ways to submit comments. Sean, you’re odd. Yep, Caroline’s even. So, if I could, could I have, Group One is going to stand behind Sean, queue up behind Sean, and Group Two will queue up behind Caroline. Right in the aisle, please. Okay, so, Sean, let’s start with you.
We have Christopher Wentland, Utility Consulting Group.
I’m making this statement on behalf of the Utility Consultation Group, representing New York major electric and gas utilities. The UCG was formed in December 2020 to provide expertise to the Climate Action Council and be a resource to the advisory panels. Our companies operate the complex systems that deliver energy our customers need at home and in their businesses. We are committed to using our significant experience to assist the state in achieving its emissions goals. Given the complexity of the energy systems and the transformation required to meet the state goals, it is imperative that the state focus beyond the continued provision of safe and reliable energy to our customers. To achieve decarbonization while ensuring reliable service requires the optimization of energy delivery systems and reliance on a multitude of existing and future energy resources. We recommend keeping all energy options on the table. Electrifying portions of our energy system that rely on other sources of energy will require additional infrastructure to meet the demands of a cleaner, larger, electric network. We should work, look at the entirety of the energy system to ensure the most cost-effective approach to achieve the CLCPA goals is achieved. The gas distribution system must continue to serve customers safely and reliably. In the future, that system can facilitate energy decarbonization by flowing low and no-carbon energy like renewable natural gas and hydrogen. We support robust research initiatives to develop these and other necessary technologies, such as electric storage, carbon capture, and geothermal systems. With our proven track record of energy, our emissions reductions, and meeting our energy delivery needs, we are committed to helping the state meet its climate goals while together ensuring a safe, reliable, and clean energy future for our customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Brian O’Shaughnessy, Chairman, Revere Copper Products Incorporated.
Just imagine a company based in New York State that supplies Tesla and other electric carmakers with product critical to their carbon-reduction cars. This New York-based company is very busy right now because every electric car uses 50% more of its product than gasoline-powered automobiles. Many of us use Zoom or other video conferencing, which also reduces the carbon footprint of travel. This New York-based company supplies almost half of a principal product used in data centers which support video conferencing. The same product is critical for building efficient electrical substations and transformers for growing wind power. Plus, their wind turbine generators need this product. Now, imagine this company uses virtually all recycled materials to make its environmentally efficient products necessary for the green revolution. Imagine this New York-based company has even been recognized by the New York DEC for outstanding environmental performance. But this company has a problem, as several similar companies in China produce the same products from government-subsidized coal-fired electricity using raw materials shipped from far-off Chile. Often, they even use recycled feed materials shipped from the USA. Imagine that carbon footprint. Of course, that New York-based company is Revere Copper, facing such fierce competition, which translates to very tight margins. I know the Committee’s working on this legislation, do not intend to increase global carbon emissions by causing Revere to shut down. Please understand that partial offsets to any increased costs associated with technology to further reduce Revere’s carbon footprint are not acceptable. Please work with Revere to sufficiently offset all of these costs and stay alive and reduce global carbon emissions. Revere is an employee-owned company which pays no dividends but reinvests 100% of any cash proceeds in upgrading the equipment and training for our employee owners. Revere fabricates copper sheet, strip coil, and busbar. Such, Revere is an integral part of the supply chain for the manufacturing of copper products.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Sean?
We have Nancy Casper, owner, Earth Eden Sanctuary.
Ms. Casper, I just want to ask you not to use promotional materials if you have those with you, okay?
No, these are just a couple photographs of evidence of my story. I live and work in an agricultural district in Wayne County, and just over the last 30 years, I have witnessed the rampant expansion of industrial agriculture practices that have transformed the landscape from its former state of small farm operations interspersed with intact forested areas that had supported abundant and diverse plant and animal species. The nature and health of this area has suffered greatly under the modern corporate narrative of growth and profit that has driven the bigger is better development of industrialized, chemical-dependent, concentrated monoculture food production. Swine, poultry, and dairy cave hosts dot this landscape, contributing to methane releases, and they hide thousands of animals in sunless warehouses, producing waste equivalent to that of large cities. And contrary to best waste management practices, is commonly spread on frozen fields that drain into Lake Ontario’s watershed. Our fresh water is overburdened with nutrients, leading to toxic algal blooms and dead zones, eutrophication, and subsequent additional methane releases. Here in Wayne County, tens of thousands of acres of apple orchard are now imprisoned by seven feet of heavy wire fencing, cutting off access to migratory pathways for wildlife to safely access food, water, and breeding territory, restricting them to confined areas unable to support healthy population. Within those massive monoculture orchards, I personally witnessed ag practices that anyone would find hard to believe, such as the open burning of farm waste, including all manner of debris from plastic and upholstered furniture, and household debris from migrant houses, housing, to farm refuges. Once incinerated, is tilled into the soil and planted with crops, not to mention the release of hazardous toxins into air and water, and as pictured, as you will see in my evidence. This area drains, let’s see, oh, as pictured, there are also practices of really poor land management, leading to severe soil erosion. You’ll see them in the picture.
I want to thank you for your comments. We’d be happy to receive the rest of them in writing. Caroline?
Katie Beldon, Policy Coordinator, Northeast Organic Farming Association of New York. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I’m a lifelong resident of Central New York and grew up on a small livestock farm. Today, I’m here on behalf of NOFA New York, which is an educational nonprofit and the largest USDA organic certifier in the state. Agriculture and food systems are an essential part of our climate future, so I’m going to share with you some of our top recommendations for strengthening the agriculture measures of the scoping plan. We’ll also be submitting more extensive comments in writing. First, the plan must do more to address inequities in our farming and food systems, including systemic racism, by investing in programs that enable underserved communities to access land and farming resources. Second, New York must invest in certified organic and agroecological farms that build soil carbon, increase resilience to extreme weather, and reduce erosion runoff and nitrous oxide emissions. For example, the plan should include a mitigation strategy for converting 25% of New York farmland to organic by 2030. Call for a comprehensive soil health program that builds on the measures in the new Soil Health and Climate Resiliency Act. Include a requirement that agriculture and forestry products that receive public funding use practices to build soil health. Set statewide soil health goals to track progress, increase accountability, and ensure the permanence of soil-sequestered carbon. Include out-of-state production of synthetic nitrogen fertilizers in the greenhouse gas inventory of New York farms, and discourage the use of synthetic nitrogen fertilizers. The last point I’ll highlight is, the plan can do more to strengthen urban and rural economies by providing income to those who regenerate soil while producing food through a Payment for Ecosystem Services Program. A PES program designed with community input would compensate farmers for the many interrelated and essential ecosystem services that their farms provide, including climate regulation and resilience, flood mitigation, soil conservation, water quality protection, and enhancing biodiversity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean?
We have Roger Kjotza from Liverpool, New York, Pragmatic Environmental of New York Blog.
I’m going to summarize the written comments I submitted on April 22nd to the Council. I don’t think the Council, much less the public, appreciates the draft scoping plans claim benefits, costs, threats to reliability, or effect of the proposed reductions on global climate change. The scoping plan claims that the cost of inaction exceeds the cost of action by more than $90 billion. That statement is inaccurate and misleading. The plan claims $235 billion in societal benefits for avoided greenhouse gas emissions. I estimate those benefits should only be $60 billion. The scoping plan gets the higher benefit by counting benefits multiple times. If I lost 10 pounds five years ago, I can’t say I lost 50 pounds, but that’s what the plan says. The cost estimates are poorly documented, but I have determined that they misleadingly exclude the costs in the transportation investments category needed to make the necessary reductions. Those costs are buried in the reference case because they are already implemented. Adding $700 billion for that and using the correct avoided cost of carbon means that the costs are at least $760 billion more than the benefits. Reliability will be risky. When buildings are 100% electric and transportation relies on electric vehicles, what happens when there’s an ice storm? There are many similar what-if scenarios not considered. New York emissions are less than one-half of 1% of total global emissions. Global emissions have been increasing on average by more than one-half of 1% per year. Anything we do will be displaced in a year, cost a lot of money, and risk catastrophic blackouts. The plan must be revised to one based on technically achievable incremental steps that maintain current standards of affordability and reliability. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Susan Keister, President, Keister Consulting.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Keister. I am a forester, forest landowner, current Chair of the New York Society of American Foresters, and an Executive Board Member of the Empire State Forest Products Association. I own and run a consulting firm in which I employ five people in good-paying professional jobs, a rarity in my rural Western New York town. Our work contributes to the operation of the wood industry, an important component of New York State’s overall economy. The focus of my firm is resource land and forest management. I’ve been in business for over 20 years, have hundreds of clients, and have visited, touched, and managed tens of thousands of acres of forest land. Every day, I wake up and I think about clean air, clean water, and sustainable resources, and I congratulate the New York State Legislature and the Climate Council for joining me in this quest. And although we are all now sharing the same goal, it’s the path to getting there that brings me here today. A healthy forest provides more than the climate benefits of sequestering and storing carbon in not only the wood it grows, but the products it produces. The trees on my forest land provide a backdrop for tourism, a home for wildlife, and a sanctuary of nature that rejuvenates all who visit. But this land cannot be sustainably managed without markets and science. Markets for the low-grade harvesting operations, which need to occur across the state, and the science, which establishes the climate benefits of the substitutional use of wood, need to be integrated into the CLCPA scoping process. Forest products, such as timber frame office buildings, biogenic fuels, which can be used to power everything from farm machinery to airplanes, and renewable natural gas, which can be used by Western New Yorkers to affordably and comfortably heat their homes, recycle surface carbon, which has been here for millions of years and will be emitted whether it is captured for human use or not. Trees left in the wood die and rot and emit the carbon they have sequestered and stored. Increasing wood use and promoting managed wood growth will not only benefit the climate but provide a much-needed private-sector boost to the rural areas of New York State and preserve the quality of life for which they are known. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Aaron Strong, Assistant Professor of Environmental Studies, Hamilton College.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Strong. I’m an Assistant Professor of Environmental Studies at Hamilton College. I received my PhD from Stanford University and have published extensively about carbon cycle dynamics and climate policy. I’ll be submitting more technical comments on the agriculture and forestry section, but I’m here today to voice my strong support for the draft scoping plan as a whole. It charts a path towards decarbonization for our state with ambitious, science-based targets for emissions reductions, and I thank the Council for its hard work on this. But, when it comes to climate policy, the devils are always in the details, and this plan is still short on some of them. A scoping plan as momentous and as globally significant as this needs to be able to be effectively implemented when it is finalized. Electrifying transportation and electrifying building heating and generating bad electricity with a zero-carbon grid are great goals and are rightly centered in the current draft plan. Efforts to water down the plan to protect fossil and combustion-based infrastructure are not helpful. But a plan for doing this wholesale electrification needs to have a lot of details about the combination of incentives and regulations that will drive this transition in a just manner that actually work, and the plan is still short on many of the details for this transition. How will vehicle charging, electric vehicle charging, work in our rural communities? How will small communities be supported in planning for electrification of transportation? The details on the incentives are quite lacking. How will we ensure justice and equity in the transition to a widespread use of heat pumps in low-income communities, especially given the plan’s emphasis on regulatory approaches using building codes? There is strong public support for the main goals of the CLCPA, including in rural New York. My colleagues and I have recently conducted a representative public opinion poll of likely voters in Oneida. voters in Oneida and Madison Counties, which found that 54% of likely voters in those counties agree with the overarching goals of the CLCPA. But transitioning New York away from fossil fuels means that we have to move forward for all of New York, including the rural parts of the state. That same poll found that only 47% of voters support the 2035 goal for electric vehicle sales, while 66% of voters express support for solar farms in development. The scoping plan needs to provide more details about how the key energy transitions for buildings and transportation can be made to work in areas outside of cities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caroline?
Mark Keister, Member, Empire State Forest Products Association.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Keister, and I'm a forester and owner of a small business, Silva Harvesting, Inc. My business focus is providing forest management assistance to private owners. But my thoughts today really extend beyond my forestry profession. Climate change is an incredibly complex issue. I do think that forests are part of addressing climate, but there's so much more we need to learn and consider before making decisions. First and foremost is basing actions on science, not agendas. Two, what will be impacts to New York's economy and its citizens? And three, what is the real impact, positive or negative, to the goals and targets set? Are we really accomplishing anything? I'd just like to point out a couple of examples that are local to us. The view from our home looks at eight very large windmills. And we can live with the aesthetics, but what is the carbon cost-benefit ratio? We already get much of our power from Niagara Falls. And what is the carbon analysis of the concrete footers, the composite construction of the turbines, the infrastructure, and the required maintenance? Bath, New York has a yard full of scrap windmill parts. Another one, we heat our home primarily with wood as a way to supplement using fuel oil and propane, as much do every other member of our community. There is discussion of removing all combustion of fuel in any form. So our electric service would have to be replaced if that were to happen. Not only the infrastructure, but our whole electric system in our home. As we move forward, I urge the council to keep in mind that New York is only a small part of a global issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Margaret Riley, New York Mills, New York.
Hi, I'm Maggie Riley. I live in New York Mills. As an environmental engineer, I work on watersheds, assisting communities in the Mohawk Valley to mitigate and adapt to flooding, one of the major effects of climate change. A current project of this Coit Creek program is a buyout of approximately 200 homes in the village of Whitesboro. Hundreds of millions of dollars are being spent on making New York resilient to flooding due to climate change. A strong scoping plan that implements the goals of the CLCPA will make New York proactive rather than reactive. Lawmakers need to uphold the CLCPA and decide to electrify New York with a grid powered by renewables, not fossil fuels, or false solutions such as renewable natural gas. It can be done, and it must be done. My husband and I have transitioned our home off fossil fuels entirely. We installed rooftop solar and an air-source heat pump system. We were warmed during two weeks of below-zero temperatures. These systems work even in the coldest of climates. We reduced our carbon footprint from 15 tons to 1.5 tons only because the grid is dirty. If we get 1.5 million similar homes to go fossil-free, that would be over 20 million tons of carbon not going in the air. If our ancestors could transition from coal to oil, then to natural gas, we can transition to cleaner alternatives such as air-source heat pumps and geothermal systems. It is projected that this transition would create an estimated 100,000 new jobs in energy-efficient construction and clean heating and cooling by 2030. For New York to become not only the national climate leader, but the climate world leader, we must electrify New York now, adopting scenario three or four of the plan. We must also establish, in the scoping plan, a moratorium on cryptocurrency mining operations that require enormous amounts of energy. Our children and our grandchildren deserve the implementation of a strong climate action that does not compromise the goals of the CLCPA. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Caroline?
Mike Del Fave, VP of Operations, International Wire Group.
International Wire Group headquartered in Camden, New York, is a copper wire products manufacturer with 12 facilities located across Central New York. Our products are core to moving electricity in many applications, including solar farms, wind power, and electric vehicles. Our footprint extends north to Boonville, south to Sherburn, west to Jordan, and east to Rome. In many cases, we're a primary employer within the communities in which we operate. We employ nearly 800 employees across Central New York with exceptional pay and benefits. All of our manufacturing operations rely solely on electricity to power the buildings and the equipment that's used to transform raw materials into finished products. We also rely on natural gas to warm the buildings where employees are working during the heating season. IWG supports the goals of the CLCPA and has taken and continues to take aggressive actions to reduce greenhouse gases through increased energy efficiency efforts, the purchase of renewable power and attributes, attributes, and modified operations. From 2014 to 2021, IWG achieved a gross 50-plus percent reduction in Scope 1 and 2 CO2 emissions, which on a volume-adjusted basis is over a net 38% reduction. In other ESG-related efforts over the same time period, IWG reduced hazardous waste by 46%, increased recycling by 49%, and reduced water consumption by 26%. Although fully supportive of the CLCPA goals, IWG is concerned about the unknown impacts of the CLCPA compliance on the overall cost and reliability of energy supplies in New York State. The CAC must examine and reveal the anticipated cost of the CLCPA compliance and measure it in the context of other factors already forcing increased energy costs in the state. Energy needs to be affordable for businesses to remain in New York. We believe that an immediate assessment of these concerns is needed to ensure that electricity and natural gas that IWG and other businesses needs to maintain jobs in New York State will be affordable and reliable as the CLCPA is implemented. IWG appreciates the opportunity to provide these comments to the CAC, and we understand the enormous challenge you're faced with. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on, Sean, could we get group three behind Sean and group four behind Caroline? Sean?
Gregory Lancet, President, Central and Northern New York Building and Construction Trades Council.
Thank you, Sean. You did a great job. If New York has any hope of achieving its clean energy goals in this decade and beyond, we must maintain reliability while being much more aggressive in pursuing cleaner technologies like nuclear, hydrogen gas, and geothermal, along with wind, solar, and battery storage. While we respectfully disagree with the rushed and flawed process of the ban plan, we recognize the truths we are raising in terms of implementation costs and grid reliability. Simply banning natural gas projects and shutting power plants without first building alternative energy supplies is an unsafe and extremely costly approach. New Yorkers were already seeing the results in their bills even prior to the upheaval in global market abroad. The fact is, we, organized labor, are the experts that will build and clean, build the clean energy systems. We understand the challenges and are offering affordable and reliable solutions to make the system cleaner while facilitating a smooth transition. For example, power plant sites that are no longer in use but supported communities and schools for decades should be used for new clean energy systems that incorporate utility-sized geothermal, hydrogen, and other technologies. The Biden administration is proposing $8 billion towards these types of clean energy upgrades. Thankfully, New York confirmed it wants to win the race to become the nation's biggest hydrogen hub. However, those aspirations must also be aggressively reflected in the climate action plan. It will provide new jobs and still support the surrounding communities. The bottom line is a reliable grid serving customers using electricity for everything from electric cars and buses to electric heat requires a 24/7 electric generation that runs regardless of weather conditions. We need dependable, round-the-clock, and closing climate action council adds sensible: Stop banning energy products that will lower emissions during the green transition; accelerate the building of sensible incremental clean energy solutions; focus on both renewable and traditional power sources; do answer the clean energy challenge while also securing jobs and savings for New Yorkers. Working together, we can help New York construct a sensible energy plan that protects New York jobs, achieves climate goals, and strengthens our independence.
Thank you. Caroline?
Alberta Bianchetti, Director, Customer and Community Management, UNY, National Grid.
Thank you, Caroline. Good afternoon. My name is Alberto Bianchetti, and I lead Customer and Community Affairs for National Grid in Central and Northern New York. Sorry. I'm here to tell you there is a better way. Last week, National Grid launched its vision to eliminate fossil fuels from its gas and electric system to reach our shared greenhouse gas reduction goals. Our vision includes three equal components. First, weatherization and energy efficiency. Next is the targeted electrification and geothermal networks, which will be essential to our clean energy future. And the third critical element is a 100% fossil-free gas network. This last piece uses existing infrastructure built over decades to deliver clean energy in the form of renewable natural gas and green hydrogen, and is more affordable and reliable than the scenarios considered in the draft scoping plan. Our approach can achieve a net-zero energy future and the CLCPA climate goals with more affordable choices, so no customer is forced into solutions they did not choose or cannot afford, and no community is left behind. Our plan has broad support from prominent business organizations and from labor, those highly skilled workers who have delivered safe and reliable energy to our state for decades, and from the academy, including SUNY ESF Assistant Professor Tristan Brown, a member of the Climate Action Committee Advisory Panel. As Professor Brown said, renewable natural gas is one of the most cost-effective tools for reducing humanity's greenhouse gas emissions that we have available. National Grid's plan, with its diverse combination of electrification, hybridization, and RNG development, will enhance system reliability while simultaneously reducing the economy's emissions of the destructive greenhouse gas methane. Achieving meaningful decarbonization requires every tool in the toolbox, and a coordinated gas and electric strategy is a better way to tackle the affordability and customer adoption challenges of the clean energy transition. The CAC should allow options other than full electrification for heating. In conclusion, the draft scoping plan would also benefit from further analysis in the following areas: More thorough cost analysis...
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to submit the rest in writing. Thank you. Sean?
Keith Solomon, Senior Project Developer and Vice Chair of Cypress Creek Renewables and Alliance for Clean Energy.
Good evening. Cypress Creek Renewables is a solar and energy storage company very active across the US. We have several operating community-scale solar projects in New York and are developing a pipeline of community and large-scale solar and energy storage projects in New York as well, including the 140-megawatt Oxbow Hill project in the town of Fenner, Madison County. Both Cypress Creek and the Alliance for Clean Energy strongly support the Climate Action Council draft scoping plan in its entirety. Implementing New York's scoping plan will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which in turn will mitigate the effects of global climate change. To achieve the 70-by-30 mandate, New York needs to advance a significant pipeline of projects into the construction phase and overcome any barriers to project development. For renewable project developers, a critical element is a clear and certain market demand. NYSSRDA provides this by maintaining a steady procurement strategy for Tier 1 renewables. We agree with the draft scoping plan that the Office of Renewable Energy Siting should continue to improve and streamline the cost-effective, timely, and environmentally responsible siting of large-scale renewable energy projects across New York while delivering significant benefits to local communities. We strongly support co-utilization of solar energy in agriculture. New York State should continue to encourage and facilitate collaboration between the renewable energy industry and the farming community to advance the objectives of the CLCPA while preserving the state's vital agricultural sector. To be successful in reaching this mandate, significant investment in new transmission resources will be required. The state should identify key transmission and distribution upgrades, improvements, and new line constructions needed to deliver renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Frank Fasikas, New Hartford, New York.
Hi, I'm Frank Fasikas from New Hartford. I don't have a title, just an average guy. I'm here to talk about the direct marketing of electric vehicles. Our goal, as stated, has been to reduce and eliminate as quickly as possible burning of fossil fuels that have such a disastrous effect on our environment and cause an increase in warming of the planet. A major part of attaining this goal is to transition public and private transportation systems from internal combustion engines burning fossil fuels to electric vehicles powered by electricity increasingly being produced by renewable energy. To this end, we must encourage automobile buying public to consider purchasing electric vehicles, or EVs. This can be best done by providing the public with the broadest latitude to experience driving and living with an EV as compared to a gasoline-driven car. To limit the retail exposure of EV manufacturers who sell directly to consumers has not only seriously curtails the public's opportunity for that experience. To take a test drive or even pick up a purchased vehicle can often involve driving several hours and perhaps even out of state to do so. One case in point, when I leased a Tesla three years ago, I had to drive nearly to New York City to pick up the vehicle. And when the lease ends next month, I'll have to drive a couple hours to take it back. It's not really fair to the automobile buying public. What about our local car dealers? A lot of legacy automobile manufacturers are now advertising EVs along with their gas cars. The marketing model is a little different. Salespeople may commission on the vehicle they sell, doesn't matter whether it's a gas car or an EV. And the legacy manufacturers are not able to drop their line of gasoline vehicles overnight. They'll have to continue to market them until they can transition totally to EVs. Pure EV builders, however, have only one type of vehicle to promote and sell, and to inhibit their ability to do so does a disservice to the buying public and the generation of Americans who are going to be living with the consequences of climate change.
I want to thank you for your comments. Could you submit the rest of them in writing, please?
That's perfect. Thank you for my two cents worth or two minutes worth.
Sean?
Philip Rose, Steering Committee, United Climate Action Network.
Thank you all for your hard work, and this important plan means a lot to all of us. There's a great conflict going on in many of our rural towns. I live in Fenner, New York. A significant percentage of farmers and residents are opposing renewable energy projects. Some towns have voted to ban large-scale solar and wind power. The problem is that under the banner and power of the Office of Renewable Energy Siting, private companies, many of whom are controlled by international renewable energy companies, come into towns and sell leases of thousands of acres of lands to owners. Many do this without consulting local leaders and residents and proceed with their projects, like it or not. When people find out about these deals, issues of the use of prime farmland, the impingement on residential housing, and land use cause huge pushback. If it's not too late, all of this could be avoided if there was a thoughtful dialogue between the renewable energy companies and local people to reach some common ground. What is needed is a state-funded mechanism that lays down specific guidelines and processes that towns could use to reach common ground with renewable energy companies. Thoughtful programs developed by professionals who know about community-wide dialogues with specific activities and timelines that could be used. Trained facilitators who do not have vested interests in the issue can be hired by the state to lead these dialogues. If a town and the companies can reach an agreement and the town can give its stamp of approval, then these companies could move up in the queue for approval before those who fail to engage in a thoughtful process. Yes, it will be more time-consuming and require more some... Yes, it will be more time-consuming and require more some funding, but it will be a great deal, it will, it will, but it will, it will eliminate a great deal of conflict and communities undermining projects that could drag on for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Bob Wilmot, Council Representative, North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Wilmot. I'm a council representative with the North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I've been a carpenter with Local 277 for 26 years and spent most of my career working at nuclear plants in Oswego. I reside in the city of Oswego, and I'm also an Oswego County legislator for District 18. I'm speaking here today to support nuclear energy's inclusion in the Climate Action Council's final scoping plan due January 2023. The North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters appreciates New York State's ongoing commitment to its upstate nuclear power stations. New York was the first state to establish a program recognizing the positive environmental benefits provided by nuclear generation. The Climate Action Council's draft scoping plan furthers the state's commitment by recommending the Public Service Commission review upstate nuclear's contribution to grid reliability and achievement of the state's decarbonization goals for potential extension of the zero emissions credits program. The facilities operate within 95% capacity factor, which is the highest in the nation. They meet the highest standards of reliability and safety and are well-positioned to run for decades. The upstate nuclear power stations produce 44% of the state's emission-free electricity, lessening the deadly effects of climate change. They are one of New York's largest employers, providing tens of thousands of highly skilled jobs. They contribute more than $3 billion to New York's economy and support our local schools and municipalities with $144 million in annual state and local taxes. We fully support New York State's goals of carbon neutrality, preservation of the upstate nuclear facilities, increased renewable energy production, and elimination of greenhouse gases. The actions of this plan are a prudent first step to preserving the upstate nuclear plants until additional policy mechanisms like carbon pricing can be implemented. The North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters strongly encourages the Climate Action Council to continue its support and recognition of New York upstate nuclear facilities in meeting these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Shaun?
Colin Byer, Associate Professor, SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry.
Thanks for coming to our campus and providing this opportunity. As I was introduced, I'm an associate professor in the Sustainable Resources Management Department here at ESF. I also serve as the founding director of the Climate and Applied Forest Research Institute, or CAFRE, which was founded by ESF and Cornell Cows in 2018 to provide policymakers and the public with the knowledge and tools needed to support science-based stewardship of New York's natural and working lands. In case you haven't memorized the whole scoping plan, in Pages 199 and 207, under Recommendations AF1 and 7, the scoping plan reads, "DEC is currently working with ESF to develop site-specific models of above-ground forest carbon across the landscape, which is expected to be completed in 2022." Today, I'm going to give you a very brief, extremely brief, update on that work, and I created an illustrated handout, which I can't give you right now, but I will submit later, for the record. In partnership with DEC and the US Forest Service, over the last two years, our CAFRE team has built a New York statewide carbon benefits mapping system that allows us to estimate carbon, forest biomass, and carbon stocks at parcel scales, estimate recent carbon sequestration and emissions since 1990, monitor future carbon benefits, track landowner compliance, and observe land use change, and forecast the carbon benefits of policy and stewardship decisions. All of these functions directly support Recommendations AF1, 3, 4, 5, and 7 in the scoping plan. Our work directly supports CLCPA by enabling DEC and forest landowners to measure and monitor carbon benefits and land use change over time using IPCC-compliant accounting methods on a parcel-by-parcel basis. In other words, we have a basis for evaluating all of the 1.4 million or so properties in New York State that have at least one acre of forest on them. And this information can be used to guide state and private sector investments and climate solutions that leverage the maximum return on investment and impact. While our work continues, we are poised to support CLCPA implementation. We're excited for the transformative opportunities this legislation provides. I want to thank DEC for their generous and visionary support for this work, and thanks to the council and the members of the scoping, the working group, for all your great efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
James Mason, President, North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters, Local 277.
Good afternoon. As the president of Carpenters Local 277, I represent about 30,000 members and about 2,700 members that live locally. I am also a resident of the town of New Haven in Oswego County. I live just a few miles from Fitzpatrick Nuclear Power Plant, 9 Mile 1 and 9 Mile 2. I am speaking here today to support nuclear energy's inclusion to the Climate Action Council's final scoping plan due January 2023. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act calls for 100% carbon-free energy by 240. New York's upstate nuclear facilities operate 24/7 and currently produce 44% of New York's zero emissions electricity. They are instrumental to achieving the state's decarbonization goals. Timely action is required to ensure these assets remain operational beyond the expiration of the existing zero emissions credit program in 2029. The North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters support the draft scoping plan's recommendations to have the Public Service Commission review the existing ZEC program and strongly encourages the program's extension. The PSC's review must take place prior to the expiration of the existing ZEC program to allow for Nuclear Regulatory Commission relicensing, which can take several years. Acknowledging these key milestones in the plan is an important first step to ensure these facilities continue to provide emissions-free electricity for achievement of the state's decarbonization goals established by the Climate Leadership Community Protection Act. Also included in the draft scoping plan is NYSRDA's cost-benefit analysis for decarbonization implementation, and they assume the upstate nuclear power plants continue to operate for 20-year license extensions. If the upstate nuclear fleet is not relicensed for an additional 20 years, NYSRDA's analysis identifies additional consumer costs of $9.8 billion to achieve the state's decarbonization goals. We cannot afford to lose the reliable source of clean energy generation. The New York's upstate nuclear plant avoids 16 million tons of carbon emissions annually. Maintaining carbon-free nuclear plants will be essential to meeting our emissions reduction goals at the lowest cost to the consumers. The North Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters appreciates New York State for establishing the ZEC program in 2017 and commends the Climate Action Council's work and draft scoping plan's acknowledgement of the value our upstate nuclear assets provide for our clean energy future. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Shaun?
John Honcic, Director, North America Transit Sales, BAE Systems.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm here on behalf of our 2,200 employees across New York State and specifically our headquarters in Endicott, New York. New York State's fleet of over 7,000 public transit buses is a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. New York State's transit agencies, such as the MTA, Albany CDTA, and Rochester, are working towards transition date targets to move towards fully zero-emission transit bus fleet operations. In the meantime, we have a choice. We could continue to buy conventionally-powered diesel buses, the same buses which helped make transportation a leading contributor for greenhouse gas emissions. These buses could be in service well beyond the year 2040. We should be requiring New York State transit agencies to stop buying conventionally-powered diesel buses and start procuring zero-emissions-capable electric hybrid transit buses in 2025 as a transitionary step towards completely zero-emissions operations. Zero-emission electric hybrid buses can provide zero-emission operations in transit-agency-designated areas, creating green zones enabled by GPS geo-fencing technologies. Zero-emissions electric hybrid buses can provide drop-in, seamless, plug-free, reliable service while lowering emissions, provide zero-emissions operations at every transit agency in New York, and drive New York State's transit bus workforce development towards fleet electrification technology familiarization. Westchester County, Toronto, Boston, Philadelphia, and Montreal have all ditched conventional diesel for zero-emission electric hybrid transit buses as a transition to fully zero-emissions operations. I strongly recommend the scoping plan to call for setting 2025 as the key date for ending conventionally-diesel transit bus purchases and requiring only zero-emission transit buses, such as electric hybrids, battery-electric-powered, and hydrogen-fuel-cell-powered buses, to be fielded across New York State. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Jessica Azulay, Director, Alliance for a Green Economy.
Thank you so much for having this hearing today. We'll be submitting written comments, so I'll just summarize a few key points. First, we want to commend the Climate Action Council for developing this plan. It's just amazingly helpful for people at every level to understand what it's going to take to address climate change, and just as importantly, what we have to gain from doing it. If we follow this plan, we'll have a more prosperous, healthy, and resilient society. In particular, we'd like to express our support for the recommendations that call for legislation to improve our building codes and appliance efficiency standards, to require new construction to be done with no fossil fuel systems, and to change utility regulations to eliminate fossil fuel subsidies. We hope the legislature will listen and will pass those laws this year. Second, I want to comment on the treatment of nuclear energy in the draft plan. We've been watchdogging the upstate nuclear plants here in this area for more than 10 years. These reactors are old. Some of them are among the oldest in the world. They're also expensive. The upstate nuclear plants are currently subsidized to the tune of $1.6 million per day through our utility bills. By 2029, when these subsidies are set to expire, we'll have spent $7.6 billion to keep them open. We appreciate the recommendation in the draft plan that analysis should occur prior to 2029 to determine whether subsidizing any of the state's remaining nuclear reactors will be necessary for meeting the 2040 emissions mandate, and whether more cost-effective and environmentally-friendly alternatives are available. We further support the even stronger recommendation from the Climate Justice Working Group that a lifecycle analysis of the environmental health, safety, emissions, and environmental justice impacts of nuclear fuel should be conducted, and the state should proactively plan for the scheduled shutdown of the four reactors upstate. We appreciate your time and attention to these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have Group 5 and Group 6 queue up? Group 5 behind Shaun and Group 6 behind Caroline. Thank you. Shaun?
Susie Winkler, Burlington Flats, New York.
I stepped into the energy-climate arena out of concern when several of my neighbors signed gas leases. Here we are 12 years later, commenting on New York legislation calling for carbon-free electricity. The mumpy road that got me here has taught me that the devil is in the details and that the success of such a plan is tenuous at best. Along with the essential technological innovation that is beneficial electrification, ground and air-source heat pumps, and EVs, comes a catch. They will double New York's electrical demand. It's difficult to fathom how huge of an undertaking it is to double electricity production while insisting that it be carbon-free. It's harder still to consider how it gets done when the premature closing of Indian Point magnified the problem by replacing carbon-free electricity with fracked gas. NYSRDA even admits that a predominantly wind and solar build-out will need backup generation nearly equal to the capacity of all our state's existing gas-fired power plants. That's not realistic or environmental. Dependable baseload electricity will be key to solving the climate problem. In addition to renewables, we need nuclear power. Annually, a single-gigawatt reactor produces as much electricity as 30,000 acres of solar panels. Equally important, it makes that electricity when it's actually needed, so that we don't continue to fall behind. I support the relicensing and management of the upstate nuclear power plants as renewables are brought online. Given what we know about the dangers of methane and our addiction to it, I urge New York to plan for the deployment of advanced nuclear facilities to work in tandem with the renewables being built today. It's the only way we truly get off of fossil fuels.
Thank you. Caroline?
John D. Randall, Webster, New York.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have degrees in electrical engineering from MIT and Stanford. I'm a trained climate reality project leader and a founding member of Color Webster-Green, and I'm also a climate refugee. The more I learn about the mechanisms and the effects of warming, the more convinced I am that we have very little time left before the loss and damage due to climate change will far exceed the cost of the CLCPA. All our actions need to be prioritized around speed, scale, and cost. One, public support is essential. Launch a major sustained statewide public education and information campaign to support climate-friendly choices by consumers for building efficiency, transportation, and agriculture. Two, a trained workforce is essential. Immediately begin to identify workforce development needs and develop a plan to scale up the workforce for the decarbonization of buildings and the clean energy transition. Three, prevent new emissions. Ban fossil fuel equipment in new buildings and deny new gas infrastructure permits. Block construction of new fossil fuel-powered power generation plants. Four, eliminate existing emissions. Start with a program to affordably weatherize and upgrade buildings. Transition to clean heating and cooling in existing buildings by 2050. Reject any approach which relies on burning fossil fuels. Establish zero-emissions standards when replacing equipment by the end of its useful life. Phase out fossil fuels in electricity generation by 2040. Five, our economy requires reliable electricity. Along with expanding renewable generation, develop sufficient grid storage and demand-side solutions to ensure reliability. Six, support natural carbon sequestration. Incentivize regenerative agriculture and related methods which increase soil carbon sequestration and reduce methane emissions. I am very proud to be a New Yorker right now as we launch an initiative to make a meaningful reduction in our emissions. The goals of the CLCPA are science-based and achievable and deserve our best efforts to make them a reality.
Thank you. Shaun?
Eric Will, Senior Manager, AES Clean Energy.
I live here in Syracuse and represent AES Clean Energy as Senior Manager of Development. AES is a Fortune 500 global energy company accelerating the future of energy. In New York, we have over 80 employees and currently operate 809 megawatts of wind and solar generation facilities with 2 gigawatts of solar and standalone battery storage under development. We're very supportive of the Climate Action Council's plan to transition New York to a low-carbon economy while creating beneficial outcomes for underserved communities. To achieve the 70% by 2030 mandate, New York needs to facilitate the advancement of a very significant number of wind, solar, and battery storage projects from development to construction, and there are ways the state can support making this happen, including continuing outreach and education for communities to increase awareness and acceptance of clean energy generation projects. Procuring at least 4,500 gigawatt-hours of clean energy each year through 2026 to provide the market demand necessary to attract the private investment needed to ensure projects get built. Streamlining the permitting process for the responsible siting of projects. Facilitating investments in New York's transmission and distribution system to allow for the efficient flow of the clean energy generated. And encouraging collaboration between the renewable energy industry and the farming community. Solar development and agriculture can both thrive here in New York. AES would like to thank the Climate Action Council for its development of the draft plan and for holding these hearings. Implementing this aggressive plan will not be easy, but we appreciate New York's commitment to improving our environment and look forward to continuing to do business here in New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Zach Bellinger, Syracuse, New York.
Good afternoon. My name is Zach Bellinger, and I live here in Syracuse in the Salt Springs neighborhood. I work at Upstate Medical, and I'm a volunteer with Syracuse Citizens Climate Lobby and a delegate for UUP. I want to take this opportunity today to speak about Chapter 17 and Chapter 11. Chapter 11 focuses heavily on simply transitioning from combustion-engine cars to electric cars. By doing this, we are not only vowing to greatly increase reliance on grid By doing this, we are not only vowing to greatly increase reliance on grid energy but ignoring a host of other problems that come with car dependence. Car dependence has severe consequences for our land use in the city and takes up valuable real estate that could otherwise be used for improving the quality of life for residents. The real solution here is an unprecedented investment in public transit. Even more important though is Chapter 17, Economywide Solutions. Carbon pricing is the strongest policy that the state can use to curb emissions. It's the policy which will accelerate the transition in every other sector. The reason that we emit so freely is because it's free to do so at the individual level. The issue with the New York ISO proposal is that it only applies to the electricity sector and could delay widespread electrification. Although heat pumps and electric on-demand water heaters are more efficient, this plan could lead to their users paying a fee for the emissions from dirty production of electricity that happens upstream, but no fee for those with onsite combustion appliances. An economy-wide carbon pricing plan is more fair and it just makes more sense. It would be wise to implement a price that starts low and rises annually so that people can acclimate and avoid any economic shock. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sean?
David Babcock, Conventor, Catholic Diocese of Syracuse, Care for Our Common Home Task Force.
Your work is enormous and thank you for all of your work. We may not have seen some of these details that are here, but I just want to offer that the scoping plan needs to address the legislative renewable energy mandates for new solar, new offshore wind and new energy storage that will be firmly, fully implemented in the next few years. For example, our state has a goal of producing 6,000 megawatts of solar energy by 2025. We didn't see in the plan where a specific strategy for achieving that goal. Provide also in the plan the same level analysis for harnessing wind energy from offshore, wind energy from rural towns and new energy storage. The need for public input about provisions is also important to include. The scoping plan also needs to address how we as a state will reduce our demand for electricity, given the status of our transmission grid. For example, how will energy conservation be encouraged? A very effective way to help address energy transmission challenges, it seems to us, is to reduce demand, particularly during peak use times. Similarly, please address how we as a state are to include or exclude the use of nuclear power going forward. The scoping plan also needs to address benefits from trees and include guidance for how to maximize those benefits. Consider developing a tree replacement system, much like how wetlands are replaced when development cannot avoid a significant impact to a wetland area. Given the extent we are impacting God's earth and the emergency we all face, let us do all we possibly can as a state to wean ourselves off fossil fuels. For too long, oil companies have been denying and delaying development of renewable forms of energy. Yes, there are costs that will affect our pocketbooks, but the costs of not meeting the thresholds mandated in state legislation would be much higher. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input.
Thank you. Caroline?
Lindsay Spear, Director of Community Programs, Alliance for a Green Economy.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment and thank you for all of your hard work to address this difficult challenge. In the past four years directing the local clean heating and cooling campaign, Heat Smart CNY, I've learned a lot about what it takes to effectively electrify upstate New York's buildings. First and foremost, people want more efficient buildings. They want to improve the efficiency of their homes, but they struggle to have the means to do so. It also takes time for them to make the decisions necessary to improve the home and to actually get it installed. We have extremely old buildings in upstate New York. 30% of our upstate buildings are built before 1939. Over half of the buildings in the city of Syracuse are built before 1939. I've encountered homes still heated with coal, homes with broken windows, zero insulation in both rural and urban areas. I'm proud that we have helped 185 homes improve their insulation and switch geothermal or cold climate air source heat pumps, reducing costs for many of them and improving their comfort dramatically. But there are another 300 that did not install, usually due to upfront costs but also due to barriers such as naphtha tube wiring and asbestos. Those need to have funding to address them as well. And we have another 1,000 people who are interested but have not started taking action. Efficiently electrifying buildings is an opportunity for massive improvement for the quality of life, health and safety, creating real benefits now with climate benefits in the future. The easiest way to make our buildings more efficient is to design them to be efficient from the beginning, and so therefore I really support the decision to stop constructing buildings with fossil fuel heating as soon as possible, preferably by 2024, to avoid waste and investment in obsolete technology. Many Heat Smart CNY homes were new builds and homeowners found that geothermal was particularly cost-effective for them. And retrofitting homes is clearly, it's possible, but adequate funding is very much needed, particularly for low to moderate income households, and I'm going to emphasize, moderate income households need help also. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sean?
Ted Skirpon, President, Business Manager, IBW Local 97.
Thank you. IBW Local 97 represents members from Buffalo to Albany and Messina to Cortland. I'd like to thank the council for their work on such an ambitious plan. The current plan calls for no new gas service to existing buildings by 2024, no natural gas in newly constructed buildings by 2024, no new natural gas appliances for home heating, cooking, water heating, closed drying by 2030. Removing that much gas from our infrastructure in that short period of time will only put a further strain on our already fragile electric grid, not to mention the cost to consumers to convert these appliances over to electric. I was fortunate to sit on a Just Transition Subcommittee where we identified the issues and concerns related to transitioning workers from fossil generation to renewable power. This was an important endeavor for me, is I had to watch our coal generation plants in Buffalo, in the Buffalo area, be shut down, workers had to uproot their families and move out of state. Unfortunately, I also had a member take his life as he could not deal with such a rushed decision. There are better ways to meet these clean energy goals without impacting consumer choice, hurting local economies or taking away jobs. I asked this council to slow down, take a look at other alternatives. We will still need base load generation and nuclear power is as carbon-free as it gets. A hybrid approach that uses clean technologies such as renewable natural gas along with dual fuel heating and cooling system as National Grid is looking at now will meet the climate goals and lessen the impact for consumers who have to convert appliances. A concentrated approach to retrain employees at fossil generation plants to be successful working with renewable energy will allow for families to remain in New York State and support our local economy. I appreciate your time and urge you to consider these alternatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Sarah Kuluta, Chairperson, Tompkins County Climate and Sustainable Energy Advisory Board.
Our board is comprised of 11 Tompkins County residents appointed by the county legislature to provide information and guidance. Each of us work professionally or as dedicated community volunteers to advance energy efficiency, renewable energy, clean energy finance, carbon markets, climate justice and climate communications. We've dedicated hours to reading and discussing the key strategies laid out in the draft climate plan. We believe it's an excellent roadmap to achieve our climate goals and navigate New York through the next three decades of necessary transformative change. Our board will be submitting detailed comments online. Speaking broadly today, we applaud the work of the council, the advisory boards and the working groups. It's been a rigorous, comprehensive and realistic process, and the strategies within each sector address many of the opportunities and the barriers that Tompkins County itself has encountered in our 20-plus years of climate action and the challenges and needs we see ahead. We recognize that a scoping plan is a framework upon which detailed policy, regulations and programs need to be designed. Global climate targets, including New York's, seem almost impossibly ambitious, but with the right technologies, community engagement and strong partnerships, we can bring them within reach. The plan's a roadmap, now we need the drivers. We need the people who understand, are motivated by enlightened self-interest and are empowered and supported to make, to drive forward on the strategies that most impact them. So we recommend first, a public awareness and community engagement campaign is absolutely key. New York needs big, bold, creative campaigns that are funded and sustained over the long term. Communication has to be targeted to get the right message to the right audience to drive specific program participation and policy compliance. Second, all programs should be designed or revamped for ease of access. Processes desperately need to be standardized and streamlined across government agencies. People need guidance, they need personal guidance and support, financial and otherwise, to participate. And third, let's not reinvent the wheel or try to go it alone. There's a, we can leverage a tremendous amount of work being done across the US, being done by other states, and we need to keep our eyes on the horizon for partnerships and peer learning and doing our opportunities.
I want to thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Sean?
Darrell Odner, Rochester, New York.
Thank you very much for this, your work on this important issue and this wonderful exercise in a democratic process. I come as a husband, father and grandfather. I am motivated to attend because of my concern for the future, which I guess everybody's concerned for their future. I am proud to be a New York State resident because of our state's progressive, environmental and social initiatives. The CLCPA is a perfect manifestation of this progressive spirit of the people of New York State. I believe the scoping plan must be stronger on the phasing out of natural gas. We need a clear moratorium on new fossil fuel plants, clear deadlines for phasing out dirty energy and procuring renewables, a 2024 mandate for all-electric new building construction and adequate funding for getting existing homes off fossil fuels, and also a moratorium on cryptocurrency mining. We must stop the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure to solve this problem. At the same time, we need to provide adequate support for displaced workers and fossil fuel-dependent industries and to communities who rely on such industries, including wage replacement, retraining, pension support and funding for reduced tax base. Our scientific community put humans on the moon one half-century ago. They know what they are talking about. With respect to climate change, the data showing that the cost of inaction greatly exceeds the cost of these investments is very compelling. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Peter Worth, Vice President, Climate Change Awareness and Action.
Thank you. I represent an organization of about 1,700 people in central New York concerned about climate change. I'm living in central New York in an affluent country where we're used to having meetings in buildings like this that are climate-controlled. I think it is very difficult to understand the urgency of the problem we are facing. But since I follow climate change on a daily basis, I can tell you right now, parts of India are experiencing a heat wave of 120 degrees Fahrenheit. This is a country where air conditioning is a luxury, where people do not have the luxury of not working in those conditions, which leads to increased heat mortality rates. We do not have, if we listened to the scientists in the 70s, we would have the luxury of time, but we squandered decades. Now is the time for action, so I encourage you to move ahead with your bold steps. Briefly, in terms of no fossil fuel infrastructure, I had the privilege of meeting Tom Goodfellow, who recently rehabbed the Whitlock Building downtown Syracuse. It was an old commercial building. He turned it into 26 apartments and 24,000 square feet of commercial space. If you go to that building, you will see the gas meter in the front foyer. It is all-electric. We have the technology, it's a question of political will. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Kalen Roche, Analyst, Invenergy.
Good afternoon. My name is Kalen Roche and I am a developer at Invenergy as well as an alum of SUNY ESF. The energy transition set in motion by the CLCPA will require the deployment of substantial new renewable energy systems, energy storage and transmission infrastructure to meet the state's climate goals, and companies like Invenergy are already investing in these renewable energy generation projects and transmission upgrades to facilitate large-scale decarbonization across the entire state. Since Invenergy's first wind farm began operations in New York in 2009, Invenergy has been on the forefront of helping build the state's renewable energy future. In New York, we operate five wind, solar and battery storage projects. Combined with our 20 additional projects in development, we represent over 2 gigawatts of clean renewable power for New York State that Invenergy stands ready to deliver. Projects that have recently begun construction or operation and those in the queue will help communities across the state be part of the climate solution while creating good-paying jobs and realizing key economic and social benefits. To achieve New York's 70% renewable by 2030 mandate, the state must advance a significant pipeline of renewable energy projects into the construction phase and overcome any barriers to project development. We agree with the draft scoping plan that New York and the Office of Renewable Energy Siting should continue to improve and streamline the process for cost-effective, timely and environmentally responsible siting of large-scale renewable energy projects across New York while delivering significant benefits to local communities. Lastly, we know firsthand the importance of outreach and collaboration with local communities. We strongly agree with the draft scoping plan's recommendation that the state continue its engagement, outreach, education and support for local municipalities, communities and residents to ensure that benefits of the new green economy reach everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Kevin Schwab, Vice President, Public Policy and Government Relations, Center State Corporation for Economic Opportunity.
I want to thank the council for your incredible work to date so far on this issue. It is a serious issue that we must all address. As we do this, though, we must acknowledge that there are other serious issues that require us to balance our focus. The economy, jobs, energy affordability, quality of life. New York has to remain competitive to provide all of the other services that are needed for this state to be successful. If we don't recognize this in a market-driven economy, New York won't have the resources to reach its climate goals. Here in central New York, we're fortunate to have a diverse economic base, institutions of higher education, great health care and a tradition of strong manufacturing here that continues. When you recycle your used paper and cardboard, WestRock transforms it into new products 10 minutes from here. We use some of the world's cleanest production techniques to make steel at Nucor. We use recycled metals at Novellas to produce aluminum alloys that create efficient lightweight vehicles. At places like SRC, Saab, Lockheed Martin, we create radars and sensor systems. We are also creating new computer chips in this region. All of these are manufacturers that are essential and they are all heavily dependent on reliable, affordable energy. We can't lose sight of that because those businesses are our present and our future. It is critical that we get this right. With this in mind, I offer these suggestions. Any period of significant regulatory change requires transition periods, certainty, predictability, time to plan. There are also regional differences. We're standing in a place right now where 90% of our electricity in this region comes from nuclear, hydro, wind and solar. Other parts of the state can't say that. We need to recognize regional differences as we are phasing in the changes. The potential to drive businesses and jobs, by the way, out of New York from this is enormous. We need to be just as focused on making sure that we keep businesses here. We need to work with them. We need to help them take the steps necessary to meet climate goals. Sometimes that means there are exceptions, sometimes that means there are incentives, but carrots are better than sticks and we need them to ultimately be successful.
I want to thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Sean?
Timothy Volk, Professor, SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry.
Great. First of all, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this issue and all the work that you and your staff have done over the last couple of years to get us to this point. I want to make a few comments about the potential for biomass here in New York State, and I think the scoping plan is missing a few key pieces as we think about that as part of the potential solutions. So, a report from NYSERTA, the Renewable Fuels Roadmap about a decade ago, identified a million and a half to 2 million acres of underutilized land in New York State that could be used to grow energy crops that could feed into a biofuel system. NRAL and EPA have also identified another million acres of highly disturbed land, so think former industrial lands here in New York State that also have the potential to grow biomass. They could also be used to clean up some of the contamination environmental issues on that site at the same time. that site at the same time. So, we recently completed a lifecycle analysis of using biomass and turning it into biofuels, and the result of that work is that we can actually, we actually have a negative greenhouse gas footprint. So, what does that mean? That we can grow energy crops on the landscape, we can turn them into biofuels, we can put them into a vehicle and drive that down the road, and at the same time, we can sequester carbon. So, we can meet multiple goals at the same point in time. There's also other benefits that occur across the landscape associated with the production of those biomass crops, such as water protection, better water quality, increased soil health, soil carbon sequestration, and other benefits associated with that. The other one I want to mention is the job creation associated with this. Again, just pointing back to NYSERDA's Renewable Fuels Roadmap from a decade ago, they projected that we could produce a billion to a billion and a half gallons of renewable fuels from the biomass supplies we have here, and it would create somewhere between seven and a half to fourteen thousand jobs. The scoping plan severely underestimated that, and I think missed some opportunities by not accounting for jobs created along the supply chain as we moved down that path. So, I just wanted to point those items out. We'll also be submitting other comments. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Caroline?
Chris Carrick, Energy Program Manager, Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board is a public agency that serves the five-county region, including eight hundred thousand residents and one hundred and fifty municipalities. Eighty percent of those municipalities participate in NYSERDA's Clean Energy Communities Program, which we are proud to administer as a contractor to NYSERDA. Forty percent of our municipalities are designated as Clean Energy Communities. We also do a lot of work helping communities complete climate action plans and greenhouse gas inventories. Commissioner Segos was with us in the town of Manlius a few weeks ago to celebrate their designation as a climate-smart community. We're very pleased that the scoping plan recognizes the importance of local government partnerships with the state, and we encourage the council to consider, local governments can do even more, and they want to do more. This weekend, we'll be hosting an electric vehicle expo with the town of Manlius. We have over twenty vehicles represented, twenty different contractors promoting solar heat pumps and other technologies. We are completing a feasibility study now for a district energy system through NYSERDA's program. We're very pleased that the results of that seem very promising, and we're also administering the HeatSmart CMY program, as my colleague Lindsay Spear noted. We've talked to thousands of folks, as Lindsay said, one hundred and eighty or more have gone through the process to weatherize or install heat pumps. In addition to all the barriers that she noted in terms of electrical service upgrades, asbestos, and others, the biggest issue is cost, and we very much welcome the twenty-five percent tax credit that was implemented for geothermal systems. We think a similar tax credit for air-source heat pumps, but also for weatherization would be very welcome and is very much needed. We would like to encourage the council to focus more on the basics, more on energy efficiency, more on weatherization. Fewer than ten percent of our homes in this region have been weatherized. Much, much more could be done. Many thousands of jobs could be implemented by just insulating attics and basements and doing those basics, so we very much encourage that. We'll be submitting more written comments, but I just wanted to focus on the building sector today. Thank you.
Thank you. Shaun?
Ethan Gormley, Project Coordinator, New York Public Interest Research Group.
Thank you all. My name is Ethan Gormley and I'm Project Coordinator for NiPerg here at SCU and ESF. So, energy hogging activities like proof-of-work crypto-mining threaten and undermine New York's ambitious climate mandates as contained in the CLCPA. The computer power necessary to compete in this highly speculative form of cryptocurrency mining is enormous. The New York Times estimates that Bitcoin mining uses more electricity in a single year than Finland with five-point-five million residents and more than the state of Washington. For instance, the Greenridge Generation is one of the largest cryptocurrency mines in America, and residents have documented how it poses a severe environmental threat to the Finger Lakes regions. The abandoned power plant-turned-mining facility currently houses over fifteen thousand three hundred computers, which run around the clock, requiring enormous amounts of energy. Greenridge predicts that its on-site and upstream emissions will exceed one million tons annually. The plant is also permitted to discharge up to one hundred and thirty-four million gallons of water a day at temperatures of up to one hundred and eight degrees Fahrenheit into Seneca Lake, damaging aquatic life and putting the booming tourism industry in the Finger Lakes at risk. The Greenridge facility serves as a test case for the roughly thirty other dormant power plants across New York that could be converted for POW cryptocurrency mining. The Greenridge Power Station has led to wasteful energy consumption, negative impacts to local air quality, massive amounts of e-waste, and an air permit that allows it to emit more greenhouse gas emissions than during its time as a coal plant. DEC has the latest decision on the plant permit until June thirtieth, noting that it had received approximately four thousand public comments. If allowed to operate, the Greenridge Power Station Bitcoin mining plant could drive a superhighway through the state's CLCPA. The responsible and precautionary approach is to require a three-year moratorium so that the DEC can complete with full public participation a comprehensive, generic environmental impact study, and we also, you know, really encourage that we stay away from the conversion of power plants to facilities that primarily engage in excessively high-energy consumption cryptocurrency mining operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have group seven and eight? Group seven behind Shaun, group eight behind Caroline. Caroline?
Philip Church, County Administrator, Oswego County.
Good evening, council members. Oswego County is home to three of upstate New York's four nuclear power plants. I'm here today to urge the council to include these nuclear plants and the extension of the zero-emission credit, or ZEC, program in the final scoping plan. Some of the facts I will use have been said tonight, but they bear repeating because they are true and significant and can't be easily dismissed. The state set a goal of one hundred percent carbon-free electricity by 2040. To achieve that goal, the state will need all four plants operating because they already produce forty-four percent of the state's zero-emission electricity. That's thirty-three hundred megawatts of reliable and safe power that avoids sixteen million tons of carbon emissions every year. Not only is the electricity they produce abundant and carbon-free, the plants provide twenty-five thousand direct and indirect jobs, contribute three billion dollars to the economy, and support local schools and governments with one hundred and forty-four million dollars in taxes every year. The draft plan recommends that the Public Service Commission review the ZEC program for extension beyond 2029, which is critical to relicensing the plants. NYSERDA determined that if the plants are not relicensed, it will cost consumers nine-point-eight billion dollars more to achieve the state's goals. In closing, clearly, the carbon-free nuclear plants in Wayne and Oswego Counties are essential to meeting emission goals at the lowest cost. So, on behalf of Oswego County, I urge the council to recognize these critical assets in its final scoping plan and applaud the council for recommending the PSC review, the existing ZEC program. We strongly encourage that program's extension. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the council's draft plan.
Thank you. Shaun?
Allison Chatrichan, Senior Research Associate, Cornell University, Ithaca, New York.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a faculty member, educator, and researcher at Cornell University. It is fantastic to see hundreds of individuals here tonight at this hearing. I'm also honored to have seven of my outstanding Cornell undergraduate students here today who will provide their comments. I wish there were more youth in the room, and I would like to ask the Climate Action Council to specifically reach out for youth input to this plan. I want to commend New York State for being a leader in the United States for addressing climate change and the hard work of this Climate Action Council. But the state must acknowledge that it will be very difficult to meet these concrete goals and plans without providing adequate resources for training, education, and technical support to help ensure that stakeholders can make the changes that are required. In many of the chapters of the draft scoping plan, there's a need identified for new training curricula and educational programs that will be critical to this economy-wide transition. I want to point out that Cornell University and its statewide cooperative extension system has already developed numerous climate change training programs that should be supported and scaled up rather than starting from scratch. I want to highlight just a few of those. First, Cornell's is the land-grant university for New York State, and we've been training undergraduates for many years through our climate change minor. Second, we've had a climate-smart farming program in place to provide resources for farmers since 2015. Third, with regard to municipalities, we know that most municipalities lack the capacity to address climate change. Out of sixteen hundred and forty-one municipalities, only twenty-two percent are climate-smart communities. In response, we developed a climate stewards training volunteer program. Just last fall, we trained fifty-two new climate stewards who are working with a ripple effect to help their communities address climate change. Fourth, the state should support the development of curricula, and we have piloted a new training program with the New York Power Authority to train over twenty-six hundred NiPUS staff. That program could be scaled up and scaled out.
Would you please submit the rest of your comments in writing?
Yes, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Michael Rosenthal, National Fellow, Elected Officials to Protect America.
How you doing? Thank you for being here. I'm here on behalf of Elected Officials to Protect America, and we would like to make it known that this act is being cheered on by a network of hundreds of state and local elected officials across the United States. Just a comment here with regard to fugitive emissions. What we're seeing is that a large percentage of these are coming from our landfills. This new food donation and food scraps recycling law helps divert food from landfills in areas that have an established organic recycler. However, I just wanted to point out that I'm not seeing much progress in the state effort to establish new organic recycling facilities across the state in areas that do not yet have one. So, I'm just asking that this plan keep organics recycling in mind as we move forward with reducing these methane emissions and trying to capture them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Shaun?
Gary Toth, Chairman, Oswego County, IDA, Upstate Energy Jobs.
Good afternoon and thank you, and I too will be submitting a written report because some of mine is repetitive, and I know this presentation will go over two minutes. My name is Gary Toth. I reside in Mexico, New York, just north of Syracuse on the shores of Lake Ontario. I am currently the Chairman of the Oswego County Industrial Development Agency and a proud Upstate Energy Jobs Coalition Partner. The Upstate Energy Jobs Coalition is a partnership of more than one hundred and sixty organizations representing organized labor, the healthcare industry, schools, environmental organizations, nonprofits, businesses, and chambers of commerce, and many more. The Oswego County IDA and the Upstate Energy Jobs Coalition support nuclear energies inclusion in the Climate Action Council's final scoping plan and New York's commitment to combat climate change. I live near two nuclear plants up in Oswego County, Nine Mile One and Two and James A. Fitzpatrick. Both plants, or all three plants, provide forty-four percent of New York State's safe, reliable, carbon-free energy, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Without these nuclear facilities, carbon emissions would increase by more than sixteen million tons annually. Continued investment in nuclear power in conjunction with other carbon-free resources is necessary to achieve our environmental goals. The Upstate Energy Jobs Coalition has adopted a mission statement of energy, environment, and economy. All three are important for a vibrant and healthy New York State. Nuclear power's energy generation provides New York State with enormous economic benefits also: three-point-six, three-point-one-six billion dollars in GDP revenue, twenty-five thousand direct and indirect associated jobs with plant operations and refueling outages, and hundreds of millions of dollars in combined payroll and property taxes supporting our local communities. We support New York's goals of carbon neutrality, increased renewable energy production, and the elimination of greenhouse gases, and we are here today to help achieve these goals. In closing, our efforts to achieve a carbon-free environment must realize that renewable and nuclear energy are not mutually exclusive, however complementary, to our state's achievement of a clean energy, economy, and future. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline? Caroline, just hold for a second. If anyone has an even number on their card, if they would line up behind Caroline. Thank you. Caroline?
Robert DeForest, past president, Home Builders and Remodelers of Central New York.
My name is Bob DeForest. I'm the President of Cordell Development Corporation. We are a residential construction company, a land development company. We have built over eight hundred homes in Syracuse, MSA. We've developed some of the area's finest neighborhoods and worked in many others. I'm here on behalf of the members of the Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Central New York. We are an association of construction professionals who employ more than fifteen thousand people in the region. Those of us in the residential construction industry are concerned with much of the draft scoping plan. We believe that the plan does not have a practical implementation and lacks an accurate economic analysis for the consumers, businesses, local municipalities, and the state itself. The cost consequences should be considered, and they should be an essential part of the process. The plan does talk about incentives, which would be vital to move forward. How can the state begin to discuss incentives when there's no analysis of the costs? Where will the money for these incentives come from? We have to suppose taxes and utility fees that will make New York even more expensive state to live in and do business. We are very concerned that this plan will hurt economic development in New York. Businesses looking to relocate to New York, and many that have called New York home for many years, may look to neighboring states to ensure that they stay competitive. To view code and other construction changes only through an environmental lens extending to 2050 without seriously examining affordability and practical implementation does not bring the appropriate balance necessary to effectively decarbonize the built environment. Our association has reviewed the work that National Good has done on this plan, and we think they have come up with some effective alternative paths to the goals of the CLCPA. We do not believe that banning natural gas in New York by 2024 is reasonable, reliable, or marketable. We stand ready to work with the council and provide experts in new home construction, remodeling, insulation, HVAC systems, and any other experts that may be needed to help reasonable timeframes and cost-effective ways to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shaun?
David Ruckberg, Pittsford, New York.
Thanks to the council for making New York a leader in the fight against the climate crisis from becoming a catastrophe. I'm a grandfather and a member of Citizens Climate Lobby. I fear for the world, my grandsons, and everybody will inherit if we don't reach our state goal of net-zero emissions by 2040. I volunteer with Citizens Climate Lobby because I believe its supportive of carbon fee and dividend mechanism is the most effective single measure to help us reach our climate goals. I strongly urge the council to support a similar mechanism in New York, which fully funding the CLCPA at fifteen billions, billion dollars a year would enable, since the governor's budget did not. To pay for it, a carbon fee on producers and suppliers of carbon-based energy would have the following effects: one, disincentivize carbon-based energy investment and development; two, return a portion of revenue from the fee to individuals to offset the rising price of carbon-based fuel use in all sectors; and we shouldn't let utilities and fossil fuel interests mislead the public, as they did with the Climate Community Investment Act, which focused on rising fuel prices and misinformation on job losses. They omitted the energy rebates New Yorkers would have received, as well as the funding of job creation and protections for disadvantaged communities; three, fully funding the CLCPA would incentivize investment and development of clean energy production and storage. As was hoped for the CCIA, a portion of the revenue should be invested in development of wind and solar infrastructure, electrification of buildings and transportation, assistance to farmers to reduce carbon pollution. We shouldn't be lured by false solutions such as blue hydrogen, so-called renewable natural gas, biomass incineration, and others which have little positive effect on carbon reduction. We have the talent, technology, and knowledge to achieve our goal, but we're not on course. Without a healthy planet to run it on, the economy doesn't mean anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Andy Shin, Cornell CALS undergrad student in course Climate Smart Communities: State and Local Climate Action.
Hi, my name is Andy Shin, and I'm an incoming senior at Cornell University studying environment sustainability with the concentration in policy and governance. On behalf of my Climate Smart Communities local governance team, I am here to recommend the following after reviewing Chapter Eight, which was on waste. On page two hundred and forty-one of the draft scoping plan, one of the components for Strategy W-1... On page 241 of the draft scoping plan, one of the components for Strategy W1 is to require a surcharge on all waste generated. There should be a clarification that other states have successfully implemented this policy and are using the funds towards waste diversion grant funds at the local level. In addition, while enacting legislation requiring reusable options for packaging consumer goods in retail stores is admirable, the authors should recognize that the difficulties behind implementing reusable container systems as phasing out single-use packaging across the board seems impractical. So with that in mind, there should be also discussion on recycling contamination rates and how the plan seeks to address this. Compostable plastics, which are not mentioned in the report but are often seen as better options, are deceiving because they are often not biodegradable, compostable, and they cause contamination. So therefore, we recommend that there should be more discussion about using paper over plastic, recyclability of both, and et cetera for Chapter 18. While there are more recommendations, but for the interest of time, those will be submitted shortly. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you. Sean?
Sue Fassler, Director of Sustainable Operations, SUNY ESF.
Thank you for this opportunity. We're going to give me an extra few seconds. I'm just kidding. All right, thank you. My name is Sue Fassler, and I serve as the Director of Sustainable Operations here at SUNY ESF, and I am also the co-chair of my union UUP's newly-formed statewide environmental issues and advocacy committee, and my comments today will also focus on the waste chapter. Some members of the waste advisory panel pushed to dramatically rethink our consumptive culture and to challenge the traditional way of doing things, but my opinion is that many of these recommendations were largely relegated to the appendix or were left out of the discussion entirely. It is my feeling that the waste recommendations included in the scoping plan largely invite incremental change as opposed to challenging the ways that we create, use, and manage materials. A lot of the recommendations focus on downstream solutions such as recycling and composting and still prioritize single-use products. I do appreciate the recommendations to establish a fee per ton on waste, requiring reusable and refillable options in retail stores, phasing out single-use packaging, and focusing on the reuse of building materials during deconstruction. Page 235 of the scoping plan references the fact that according to the EPA, on a lifecycle basis, 42% of the national greenhouse gas inventory is influenced by the energy and fuel consumed in the production, use, and management of the materials that become waste. However, far too often, we hear about more green buildings, more electric cars, and more renewable energy when planning to combat climate change. These proposed solutions have a place, but far more critical is a nuanced and difficult discussion about consumption in general. We must arrive at a place where the focus is not simply upon more. To combat climate change, we must focus on upstream solutions such as reduction and reuse. Ad libbing here, for example, the state has a very wasteful, costly, and just an antiquated surplus property system. This is something that we can really immediately make changes to. So in closing, if New York State truly desires to lead the nation and world into the future, we must do nothing short of truly fundamentally rethinking our way of life and our relationship and reliance on continual extraction and consumption. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Wendy Lau, Cornell CALS undergrad student in course Climate Smart Communities: State and Local Climate Action. Good evening. My name is Wendy. I'm a senior studying government and environment sustainability, and I'm also a resident of New York City. I will be commenting on Chapter 14 on industry, and I will organize my comment by stating first what I support, what I think is unclear and is missing, and how this chapter can be improved. And it's important to address industry-based emissions as it makes up 9% of statewide emissions, and I support the delegation of assignments to federal agencies to help achieve the strategy and goals of this chapter, which includes energy efficiency, switching to low-carbon fuels, decarbonizing the electric supply, and negative emissions. I think personally what I think is unclear is how much money New York will use for each of these incentive-based strategies included in this chapter. For instance, one of the strategies is for New York to purchase more low-carbon building materials to incentivize businesses to produce and increase the supply of these materials for less carbon-intensive construction. However, it's unclear how much of these materials New York will need to buy, for what duration, and the priority this strategy will be placed on. Many of the strategies included in this chapter lack these specificities. It's also unclear if industries participated in helping to create these strategies, and whether any forms of agreements are currently in place with certain industries already, which could be included in another paragraph in this plan. And also, what's unclear is what are some accountability measures to keep these industries in check? And I think what is missing in this chapter is how these, of what social corporate responsibility is included, alternative renewable energy sources in the industries that are being implemented. And I think what can be improved is that while it's important to also provide funding for facilities for emission reduction strategies, it's also important to create incentives for industries to clean up their own emissions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Sean?
Don Hughes, Conservation Chair, Sierra Club, Atlantic Chapter, CNNY Group.
Thank you very much. I also teach at Lemoine College, and I am owner of Hughes Environmental Consulting. And I want to thank you all for your attention and for your hard work on this, and I'm amazed at your stamina. So first, my first message is, don't slow down. Do not slow down. We are at a critical juncture to avert a climate disaster. The plan is already warm by 1 degree Celsius. We are already feeling the effects here in New York with flooding and extreme weather. California and Australia have experienced massive forest fires due to higher temperatures. We've seen heat waves all across the planet, and that's what a 1-degree increase has given us. We are on track to hit 2, no matter what we do. If your plan is implemented, we could hopefully keep it to that. If we want our children to have a livable future, we must have a strong climate plan which reduces both carbon dioxide and methane emissions as fast as possible. Every pound of carbon dioxide that is emitted is a burden on our children and on their children and the generations to come. As many of you know, carbon dioxide, once it's emitted, stays around for hundreds of years. Because of that, I recommend that you impose an immediate moratorium on new fossil fuels, allow no new natural gas infrastructure, require all-electric new building construction by 2024, and make massive investments in getting existing homes off fossil fuels. I also want to mention that nuclear is not carbon-free. Nothing is carbon-free. I'm so sick of hearing that expression. All right? Everything has a carbon footprint. You must use lifecycle analysis to look at carbon emissions. So I see my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Chloe Long, Cornell CALS undergrad student in the course Climate Smart Communities: State and Local Climate Action.
Thank you for this opportunity. I speak on behalf of my Cornell peers who strongly support climate justice and a just transition. I'll be commenting on Chapters Six and Seven, which my peers and I thought were comprehensive but lacking some details. We agree with the just transition principles outlined in Chapter Seven. We must prioritize historically marginalized communities and working people when transitioning to a carbon-neutral economy. However, it is unclear how the government will measure progress towards and monitor the principles of a just transition as listed in Table 2 of Section 7.1. We recommend creating a well-defined process for how communities and local governments should report progress. In subsections Direct Displaced Worker Support and Training Curriculum and Programs of Section 7.2, the need for job training programs that help in new displaced workers is mentioned, but how these training programs will be implemented, who will be conducting these trainings, and where funding for these programs will come from is not described. We urge New York State's Climate Action Council to thoroughly consider how these programs will be implemented and how funding will be allocated. Please continue to include disadvantaged communities in discussions about climate justice and a just transition in the future. Regarding climate action strategies, we ask the council to consider a discussion on climate adaptation and resilience alongside the scoping plan's current focus on climate mitigation when thinking about a just transition. Mitigation strategies tackle the causes of climate change to reduce its severity. This involves reducing greenhouse gas emissions and enhancing carbon sinks, which the plan discusses at length. But mitigation does not address the consequences of climate change. Adaptation does. Adaptation is adapting to a changing climate through adjustments in social, ecological, or economic systems. It is planning for the effects of climate change and reducing the vulnerability of natural and human systems through measures like forest protection, riparian buffers, or building design. We recognize that the terms mitigation-adaptation may seem interchangeable, but recognize that these two are distinct. We recommend the council consider strategies that encompass both climate mitigation and climate adaptation synergistic strategies to address the consequences and causes of climate change in a comprehensive, cost-effective manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean?
Randy Wolken, President, the Manufacturers Association of Central New York.
Good evening. New York State has adopted one of the most aggressive climate action plans in the nation. MACNE admits there will be significant benefits to the climate action plan. However, in association of thousands of manufacturing business leaders, it's vital that you understand that the final scoping plan needs to conform to the needs of our economy and the public. I'm here to share my concerns. The draft scoping plan seeks to decommission existing gas networks that would significantly impact business and manufacturing operations. Energy availability and reliability are significant constraints as natural gas is eliminated. Natural gas is a highly reliable and resilient energy resource providing base power when renewables are not available. Beyond the reliability of the energy system, this new plan would impose significant costs on businesses and consumers. The high level of new renewable energy generation required to be developed over the next eight years is unprecedented. We'll need a plan that considers the cost, technology availability, and necessary transition times so businesses and consumers can respond effectively. Let's create a smart plan that advances both the climate and economic growth. Now is the time to consider what impacts the plan would have on our businesses and consumers. A comprehensive and ongoing study of the cost impacts of implementation of the final scoping plan will be needed. MACNE and its members are committed to a smart and effective implementation of the climate plan. How we implement the plan will have lasting impacts in our community. We'll submit written comments as well, and thanks for your attendance.
Thank you. Caroline?
Jack Mulvaughill, Hubble Galvanizing.
Good evening. Looks like you guys could use a drink. I could too. There's a lot of talking. So I am representing my family's company. I am a fourth generation. We hot-dip galvanize steel for the infrastructure of New York State. This is for highway safety, roads, bridges, et cetera. I don't need to go into it. We use a lot of natural gas. We have to keep zinc molten. We have 850,000 pounds of zinc molten in a tank that we cannot turn off. I don't know what the best way to heat is. I'll leave that up to smarter people. But being here today, it sounds like there's a huge divide between environmentalists and businesses. Environmentalists, please listen to the needs and issues that us businesses are facing. Help us figure this out. I'm an outdoorsman. I'm a conservationist, but I'm also a business owner. Keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Andy Major, Coordinator, Syracuse Cultural Workers.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've had a longtime concern with energy issues, beginning with the 1973 gas crisis when I was a young person. When I went to college in 1979, I planned to study solar power to support the transition to renewable energy, in part after living through the fear and danger of the Three Mile Island Nuclear Accident. I join others who have asked you to look at the full lifecycle impact of nuclear plants, as well as the other major dangers imposed by nuclear power. When I came here to Syracuse, I began learning from our Onondaga neighbors about a deeper way to understand our connection to the natural world and our responsibility to the seventh generation. They've been talking about climate change for many, many decades, and unfortunately, there's been little heed paid to that. I'm here as both a Syracuse resident, a New York stater, and as coordinator of Syracuse Cultural Workers, a national publisher based here. Here are some of my primary concerns for you of the Climate Action Council. Please center plans on a just transition, seeking to address the environmental racism and economic injustice which have permeated our state and nation for centuries. A rapid, large-scale transition away from fossil fuels needs to include no new fossil fuel infrastructure or false solutions such as expanding nuclear power, so-called green gas, biofuels, et cetera. Renewable energy development needs to respect local communities and indigenous nations, including a major investment in school solar projects. Schools across this state have large, open roofs, usually with no impediments to full solar exposure. Funding those projects would help produce more green energy for us. It would help reduce costs for struggling schools and provide great educational opportunities for the students who attend those schools and give them a concrete example that we adults care and are making a difference.
I want to thank you for your comments. Could you submit the rest in writing? Thank you. Caroline?
Jacob Phite, Cornell CALS undergraduate student in course Climate Smart Communities: State and Local Climate Action.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to be here today to talk to you all about the scoping plan. Happy to see Professor Harworth here, representing Cornell on the council. And the work of the council is phenomenal. I think that not only the people of New York State, but the people of the United States of America are looking toward New York State to be a leader in climate change, in fighting climate change, in making sure that our communities are more resilient. Unfortunately, though, you all will not be here forever. And that means that we have to empower the next generation. We got to make sure that local town boards and schoolchildren coming up in our elementary schools have the tools, have the information necessary to make these changes. So in reading the draft scoping plan, I've noticed an issue with information, and not a lack thereof, but a lack of citing properly and ensuring that this information is able to be accessed by all in our state. So this requires adding hyperlinks to our citations as opposed to just leaving legal citations that would be perhaps more understood by an attorney rather than a schoolchildren or a volunteer local town board member. Similarly important is the overemphasis on abbreviations. I think that we got to make sure that this information that's offered in the scoping plan is not just understood by PhDs and Ivy League students. Actually, more importantly, I believe that it should be understood by schoolchildren, teachers, by people who just simply want to make a difference in their communities, who might not have the extensive training necessary to understand it in its current form. And so therefore, I call on the state to realize the potential of technology in incorporating softwares that will allow folks to be able to understand while they read, perhaps through a mobile glossary or another way of incorporating that information alongside the text. So I appreciate all your work, and I am excited to see the final product. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Alan Cole, Kirkland, Clinton Climate Smart Community Task Force.
Thank you to the members of the Climate Action Council. I've watched many of your meetings online, so it's great to see you here today in person. Today, I'm commenting on the transportation sector of the draft plan. Overall, I'm a strong supporter of the plan and its broad outlines, and I'm submitting separate written comments, more extensive comments. But today, I would specifically like to comment on the charging component of the T-1 strategy for light-duty vehicles. I think that this component is not specific enough and is lacking details. For example, what kind of chargers do you recommend? There are basically three kinds of chargers available in the United States today. Federal and New York State programs incentivize CCS and Chatham-O chargers. There are basically no Tesla chargers available in New York State throughway service areas or welcome centers. By contrast, New Jersey service areas have both CCS and Tesla chargers, making it possible for all EVs to be fast charged. So I suggest that the council recommend that approach in your final plan.
So, I suggest that the council recommend that approach in your final plan. A second point is that the plan is basically silent on how fast charging, in fact, any charging at all, can be made available to apartment and urban dwellers, where you may not have a garage for at-home charging, or you may be forced to use on-street parking. So, what do we do for those people? And the final point I'd like to make is about the timeline for installation of these chargers. I think arguably, EVs are in the sort of S-curve exponential growth phase of a new technology. And a federal program which ends in 2028 and a New York program which is sort of leisurely in its approach to installation is, I think, not fast enough. And so, again, I recommend that your final plan include a very aggressive time schedule. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Caroline?
Mike Bradshaw, Business Representative, Nine Mile Point, I.B.E.W., Local 97.
Hi, folks. I appreciate all the hard work you've done, and I just wanted to say a few words about some of the folks that work out there. We represent about 850 employees at Nine Mile Point and Fitzpatrick. These are some of the most highly skilled and best career opportunities in the Assewag County area. We also, you know, we have refuel outages, we have big construction projects, so probably anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 local trades, ironworkers, pipe fitters, they are all employed with us annually. You know, the three units produce 2,700 megawatts zero emissions electricity, 24/7, 365. You've heard all that before. But they're essential to the power grid for base load management, you know, which ensures us a stable and reliable electric system. The communities that host our plants depend heavily economically with the small businesses, indirect jobs, and needless to say, they're our largest taxpayer in the county. These units require no bigger footprint than the one that they started with. Spent fuel stored onsite either in a pool or in dry cast storage. So, we're not putting solar panels up. I'm not knocking anything, but just everything that happens is right on that site. So, I would just recommend that, to the council, that nuclear power be a top player in your decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean, just hold for a second. Is there anyone in Group 9? Group 9 could line up behind Sean, please. Sean?
Herb Schreishewen, Manlius, New York.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I wanted to bring to your attention something that is recently issued from NERC, North American Electric Reliability Corporation. It's one in a series of reports, technical reports, on performance of inverter-based resource technology after the system disturbances. This is a controls issue for these types of facilities. There have been a number of reports before the most recent one. The draft plan has a very light touch on this, mentioned smart inverters once on page 160-something, and actually, there needs to be an improved analysis of this because if the dependence of the system is increased on renewable resources, which are inverter-based, and they can't recover from disturbances, normal disturbances, line trips and that sort of thing, they're not there to pick up the ball after those disturbances. We really haven't designed a system that's going to work. In the particular case, the most recent report, there were four disturbances in California, June, July, two in July, and one in August. Collectively, 2,400 megawatts of solar didn't come back to work after those disturbances, and 250 megawatts of DER was also affected on the propagation of those disturbances. I think that the plan is not going to be actionable if we face a series of those kind of events, and that it certainly deserves some consideration in your final plan, an examination of that technical issue. I'll be submitting written comments with all the citations and references for you to consider. Now, I know you might be biased towards sending this to the PSC and ISO, but I do think it deserves your consideration also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline?
Richard Kornbluth, CNY Solidarity.
Hi. My name is Richard Kornbluth. I am a retired home performance contractor, and I still actually work with NYSERTA. I helped them develop the Comfort Home Pilot Program, which combined energy efficiency and heat pump installations. And I represent the CNY Solidarity Coalition, which is a grassroots, volunteer-based, community-action group in Syracuse with over 2,200 members. My comments will be directed to the market sector of the CLCPA. According to the 2020 census, there are about 7,417,000 occupied housing units in New York. The CLCPA draft scoping plan says that approximately 48% of households can be classified as LMI. That leaves about 3,900,000 households that qualify as market-rate customers. I don't know to what extent the buildings occupied by these nearly 3.9 million households can be described as energy-efficient by today's standard, but I suspect it's not a huge number. I can base that on over 20 years of programs through NYSERTA to create energy-efficient homes that have resulted in only a few hundred thousand at the most successful jobs. The goal of the CLCPA is to electrify 1 to 2 million homes by 2030. That's eight years from now, not a long time, and then, the goal is 250,000 more a year until 2050. Here are my concerns. According to the census, heating with natural gas accounts for 59.4% of households. That's about 4.4 million households. For homeowners who heat with natural gas, electrification is not a good investment. Much of the utility incentive structure is based on cost-effectiveness guidelines attached to the system's benefit charge, which imposes, according to the PSC, fairly restrictive calculations on cost-effectiveness, which rules natural gas out of much of the utility incentives.
I have to ask you to submit the rest of your comments in writing, please. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Sean?
William Sunderland, Senior Associate, Center for International Forestry Research.
My brief comments underscore two points. I urge you to support legislation that would require all new buildings to be carbon-free by 2024. And I urge you to be very skeptical of National Grid's idea of developing renewable natural gas and green hydrogen as a replacement of fossil-fuel natural gas. Let me be specific on my objection to National Grid's plan. Currently, this is merely an idea on paper that is not underpinned by solid research and is nowhere near to being actionable. My biggest concern is this. If we introduce gas infrastructure to new buildings in 2024 and beyond and renewable natural gas fails to materialize, then we can guess what would happen. Those new buildings will use fossil-fuel natural gas for an indefinite period. Moreover, this continued use of fossil-fuel natural gas would happen not just in new buildings, but in existing ones as well. We are all too familiar with the foot-dragging of the fossil-fuel industry on the way to a post-fossil-fuel world. National Grid's RNG plan is proposed as an accompaniment to heat pumps. The plan, as they explain it, is that heat pumps could be used during part of the year and then would be backed up by RNG in the colder months. As the owner of a geothermal heat pump in my home that works perfectly well in the dead of winter, I know that gas backup is unnecessary. Let's place our future heating and cooling reliance on heat pumps. Compared to renewable natural gas and green hydrogen, this technology is far more developed and capable of serving not just new, but also existing buildings. Heat pump dissemination and adoption does have some challenges, among them upfront costs. I am optimistic that continued advances in the technology, notably in the area of community geothermal, can serve New York State well in achieving a timely transition to a post-fossil-fuel era. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Sabrina Baucher, Syracuse, New York.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sabrina Baucher. I'm a disabled veteran on a fixed income. I left Kansas for many reasons, but one main was that a fracking company dumped toxic chemicals that poisoned the water, so taking care of the earth is a high priority for me. On looking at your plan, it seems there will be a lot of increased sales for heat pumps and electric cars. There is also a point of early retirement of old vehicles. Is the public expected to buy these things, including new vehicles? Syracuse is a poor city with almost 50% of children in poverty. I am also concerned that the fossil-fuel industries will pass the cost of going green onto the consumers. I wish that these questions be addressed by the government body. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
David Mackelwicks, Senior Vice President, Center State CEO.
Good evening. A member of ours, Steve McCormick, used to run the Anheuser-Busch Brewery that's about 12 miles up the road in Baldwinsville, and he had a brain teaser he liked to ask people. What do you think is the largest factor that contributes most to the cost of a can of beer that you buy on your grocery shelf? People would often guess ingredients such as the price of grain or hops. Others would thought it would be the cost of water, the cost of labor, or they might guess it was the cost of the aluminum that went into the can. Steve would keep saying no, and when people were exasperated from guessing, he'd give them the answer. It was the price of electricity that went into making the product. As he would point out, electricity is needed in every part of the supply chain to make beer. You need electricity to pump lake water to the plant. You need electricity to make aluminum into a can. You need electricity to power the brewery. You need electricity to run conveyors and filling machines. You need electricity to provide for grocery store refrigeration. This is an important concept that the economic study missed when it asserted that there are only a few industries that would be significantly impacted by an increase in the price of electricity. They missed the concept of the supply chain, and the electric cost impact is cumulative as you bring together all the elements to manufacture a product. So, there are some questions I'd like the council to consider. What is the increase in the price of electricity that you are projecting based upon the implementation of the recommendations? How will that increase compared to other states, particularly those close to us who we compete with, such as Pennsylvania and Ohio? And if you do succeed in electrifying transportation and buildings, can New York State generate enough electricity at a competitive price to meet the increase in demand that will be driven by electrification? We ask you to keep these figures in mind. It's a very important and competitive economic world, and we need to keep the energy prices stable and reliable. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
James Emery, Board President, Mexico Academy and Central School District.
Good evening. I'm appearing on behalf of the students, staff, and residents of the Mexico Academy and Central School District to express the utmost support for New York's upstate nuclear facilities, including the current language in the Climate Action Council's draft decarbonization scoping plan that affirms nuclear generation. Nuclear generation provides the following: a significant amount of the state's carbon-free base-load energy that will be needed in the future. This source will help to meet the Climate Leadership Community Protection Act requirement to be 100% carbon-free by 2040. These nuclear facilities provide 3,300 megawatts of non-fossil-fuel-safe and reliable electricity. These facilities provide millions of dollars to support local communities. One such facility, the James A. Fitzpatrick Nuclear Power Station, is our school district's largest taxpayer. Because of the revenue from this nuclear facility, the students of the Mexico Academy and Central School District receive excellent educational opportunities. We are extremely grateful for this nuclear facility. Finally, as one of upstate New York's largest employers, the nuclear power stations provide some 25,000 direct and indirect high-paying jobs desperately needed in the upstate economy. NYSERTA performed an analysis of the state's economy-wide decarbonization goals. It assumes the upstate nuclear power stations continue for an additional 20 years beyond their existing operating licenses. Some $9.8 billion in consumer costs and significant job losses will occur if this fleet of nuclear plants are not relicensed. These severely negative economic impacts do not need to happen. It is my hope that the NYSERTA analysis and the Climate Action Council's draft scoping plan's recommendation to have the Public Service Commission review the existing zero emissions credit program will lead to the extension of the ZEC program. I will conclude by thanking New York State for establishing the ZEC program 2017, and I commend the Climate Action Council's work and its draft scoping plan's acknowledgement of upstate's nuclear's role in New York State clean energy future. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Sean?
Ken Reel, Manager, Martins Stove and Fireplace.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ken. I've worked in the heating industry for over 11 and 1/2 years here in upstate New York. We're constantly faced with people who come in our store that are cold from their electric heat being inadequate or can't afford their $400 to $600 a month electric bill. Some of these have been elderly. They can't carry wood or a bag of pellets, so their only option for heating is natural gas or propane. People over the past 125 years have relied on natural gas as a reliable and comfortable heat source. These units work in a power outage, which we know is very common in upstate New York. Proof of that, just one week ago, was the largest geographical power outage in New York State history. The large ice storm in northern New York in January of 1998 is another example. How will these people stay warm if their only heat source is electric? Electric has not been proven as a reliable heat source in colder climates such as New York. Another aspect of this is the safety side. We know that there's people that have jerry-rigged a makeshift heating system because they can't afford a new heating system. It's these kinds of scenarios that cause house fires. The elderly and children are endangered because of poor decisions made by the desperate, caring adult living in the home. As a member of our local fire department and EMS for over 20 years, I've been given a firsthand glimpse into the hazards that arise when people's freedom to choose their heat source is taken away. The need for a balanced and measured approach to maximizing responsible energy consumption is something we can agree on, but this current proposal does not accomplish that goal. When people are forced to heat with electric, this problem will only escalate. In closing, the success of a society and its connected economy depends directly on its ability to allow people the freedom to choose how they manage and consume energy resources. This overreach ends that freedom. I stand here in opposition of the current proposed natural gas ban in New York State. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caroline?
Patrick Carroll, United Association of Plumbers and Steam Fitters, Local 81.
My name is Patrick Carroll. I'm Assistant Business Manager, United Association of Plumbers and Steam Fitters, Local 81, Syracuse, New York. Our geographical footprint is roughly 10 counties from Ascena to the Pennsylvania border of South Valmyra. I would like to note today that we are in full support of reducing New York State's carbon footprint while maintaining a reliable power system that will support the whole state, not just parts of it. Upstate New York produces 2/3 of New York's power supply. It only uses 1/3 of the state's power. Upstate has the ability with four nuclear plants and the desire to produce the power New Yorkers need as we transition our state's environmental goals. Each of the four reactors has the potential to avoid 16 million tons of CO2 emissions compared to the fossil-fueled power plants. In 2016, I was one of the 60 stakeholders traveling all over upstate to Albany garnering support to keep James A. Fitzpatrick Nuclear Plant open when then-Governor Cuomo announced its closing. Not only were we successful in keeping the plant open and avoiding economic disaster, but also helped New York State's environmental goal to help reduce carbon emissions by 50%. This summer, at the Nine Mile Point Nuclear Plant in Scribe, several craft will be working on a hydrogen project that will allow the plants to produce their own hydrogen for the current needs and lessen the need for fossil fuels produced on hydrogen going forward. All this strengthens the need for nuclear power to be part of the equation to help New York become a leader in the nation's climate goals. With generation four nuclear designs available today, we could potentially... With Generation IV nuclear designs available today, we could potentially achieve our goals of zero-carbon power sooner than later. I'm sure our area of the state would welcome the new design reactors, not only reduce our need for our state power, out-of-state power, but make us a leader in the climate change. In closing, it represents some of the best trained and skilled craftsmen and women in the country, none of which are being presented to you over the council's hearing, can be accomplished without skilled craft. I ask that you allow the men and women of the building trades in New York, build and produce all the infrastructure upgrades and any of the new construction associated with New York State's environmental goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean.
Mary Thompson, Executive Officer, Home Builders and Remodelers of Central New York.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the members of the Home Builders and Remodelers of Central New York, who are also part of the New York State Builders Association. Our members are proud to build, remodel, repair, maintain the housing stock across central New York. We support the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and want to assist to allow New York to have well-thought-out plans to transition to new energy sources over time. We are concerned that the draft plan, as it stands, will hurt economic development in New York. It will not be able to reach the supply and reliability needs of New Yorkers, and it will add to the already-existing housing affordability issues we have in New York. Housing affordability has been an ongoing concern, and factors such as law and labor shortages continue to impact housing prices. The issue was compounded in 2011 by skyrocketing material prices, which had far-reaching effects on multiple aspects of the building industry. Requiring new home construction to go all-electric by 2024 will only compound the costs of new homes. It will also make existing homes that have natural gas in them more desirable to consumers who are not interested in all-electric homes. If consumers were interested, our builders would be building them. New home construction today is already very energy-efficient per the current building codes. It is the older homes that need the energy efficiency upgrades and the technology that is there to make it happen, but it is expensive. On a local level, 3/4 of the homes in Anadaga County were built before 1980 and about 1/3 of those before 1939. These older homes are more difficult and more expensive to both maintain and retrofit to make them more energy-efficient. However, doing so would make a bigger impact on improving our environment than the small, in comparison, number of new homes that are built each year with the high level of efficiency. Allowing for a mixed use of energy will allow for a more equitable transition for these existing homes to be more energy-efficient. Talk to the experts in the field, please. We are here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline.
Lauren Jones, SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry.
Good evening, everybody. Should I take this off? I'm a junior in conservation biology here at ESF, and I'm also the Director of Sustainability for the Undergraduate Student Association. Let me start that I am, my peers at ESF are glad that the state is stepping up as a national climate leader with this ambitious policy. We are going to need to implement it with creativity, practicality, and justice. Here are some general things I would like to see in New York's final plan. Divest from fossil fuels in a way that minimizes cost to consumers. Localize renewable energy production to create green jobs. Hold big industries responsible for emissions and waste they produce. And update the grid, especially with all of the electric demands that we're going to be putting on it, and public transportation and improving walkability. Improving community access to affordable, locally-grown foods. And working with farmers on practices that sequester carbon, restoring degraded environments to improve their resiliency and make them safer for people to enjoy. And enacting policies that not only enforce regulations but incentivize the change. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to be very brief, but I hope that I covered a lot of scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean.
Philip Sisser, Cornell Cows undergrad student in course, Climate Smart Communities, State and Local Climate Action.
Hi, everyone. My name is Philip Sisser. I'm a student at Cornell University. My comments today regard Chapter 8, which discusses threats to public health from climate change. The chapter greatly emphasizes the adverse health effects from poor air quality due to fossil fuel combustion activities, but alludes to other health impacts only in passing. For example, climate change applies pressure to the continuity and reliability of our food supply. This will occur through crop yield failure due to increased rainfall, leading to rising food prices. Another example is when the chapter references increasing, quote, "anxiety and PTSD following extreme weather events." The claim does not mention how this will exacerbate the broader mental health crisis and lacks a citation, although it does resemble a study conducted following Hurricane Katrina. In addition to high heat, extreme cold temperatures are also associated with death, especially when the power fails and people resort to other sources of heat. Lastly, when discussing the health disparities of asthma and cardiovascular disease, those of indigenous communities should also be included. The, quote, "additional studies" in the second-to-last sentence of Section 8.1 lacks a citation. Further, it makes sense to combine Section 8.2 with the transportation subsection of Section 8.3. According to the Department of Energy, transportation accounts for 47% of total carbon dioxide emissions in New York State. Emissions from transportation are a more proximate cause to our health problems than those from power generation. Transportation remains the toughest source of emissions to address. The chapter could have expanded upon the difficulties of implementing those proposed solutions, such as the feasibility of expanding public transit or walkability in rural towns. The council should consider other solutions that are easier to implement, like roundabouts, which reduce emissions, improve traffic flow, and are safer for pedestrians. In brief, the chapter should analyze other public health categories put at a higher risk from climate change. While the chapter did address public health disparities for low-income communities, it could have analyzed this more in-depth, especially for the indigenous nations of New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, hold for a minute. Anyone in Group 10?
Group 10 and 12.
Group 12?
Group 12.
That would be behind Caroline. Okay, thank you. Caroline, go ahead.
Justin Wilcox, Executive Director, Upstate United.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Justin Wilcox. I'm the Executive Director of Upstate United, a nonpartisan pro-growth advocacy coalition made up of business and trade organizations from upstate New York. I want to thank the Climate Action Council for the opportunity to voice our concerns about the draft scoping plan. I also want to acknowledge the challenging and important work being done by the council. The policies you recommend will potentially change how almost 20 million New Yorkers live and work. At the same time, it's important to remember that solutions are supposed to solve problems, not create more of them. The draft plan recognizes the potential for job losses and increased pollution through leakage. Moreover, the CAC acknowledges that climate change is a global problem, whereas the state's policy authority is confined to activities within its borders. In sum, we agree. New policies must recognize the challenges posed by a global issue that spans geographies and borders. To that end, I'd like to highlight a key point that deserves more attention. New York's emissions account for just 0.4% of all global emissions. Even if New York State eliminated all emissions, it wouldn't make a dent in our global climate. Communities across New York State would still be subject to climate change due in part to rising emissions in China, India, and other nations. The high-end estimates cost of implementing the CLCPA is $340 billion. That's a massive price tag for minimal results. Families are already being squeezed by New York's high cost of living and historic inflation rates. These hard-working New Yorkers shouldn't be forced to pay tens of thousands of dollars out of pocket for new heating and cooling systems and other home upgrades. The council should carefully consider whether its policy proposals will drive more families and businesses out of New York. That is a lose-lose scenario that the state simply can't afford. To be clear, we agree that climate change is a serious challenge that must be addressed. However, this is a global challenge that must be met on a global scale with all nations working together. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sean.
Catherine Cornet, Cornell undergraduate student in course, Climate Smart Communities, State and Local Climate Action.
Good afternoon. I'm an incoming senior at Cornell studying climate science, sustainability, and public policy. Climate change is undeniably the biggest issue of my generation, and while you might be crafting this plan today, we will be the ones living with the consequences of the gaps in this report. Over the course of my Climate Smart Communities class this semester, I did a deep dive into Chapter 2 of the scoping plan, and will be submitting formal comments and recommendations to the council with the rest of my class. Today, I will highlight some of the most important issues that should be amended in order to make this report as impactful as I know it can be. Climate policy faces an uphill battle against those who would deny the reality of climate change. Reports like this must include data and references that make it impossible to deny our change in climate and what we must do to fix it. A major section of Chapter 2 is about climate predictions, but you're lacking important data from sources such as NOAA and NASA on issues like storm frequency and strength and changing CO2 levels that can bring skeptics over to our side and help explain these complex issues to the people that are invested in them. Section 2.4 focuses on technology advancements and trends. In terms of renewable energy, the reality is that we've fallen behind many European countries like Germany. They've made great strides in transitioning to wind and solar energy. But this means that we can learn from their mistakes and lean on their experience to make our own transition away from fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline.
Timothy Daly, Assistant Business Manager, IBW, Local 1249.
Good evening. Dear Climate Action Council, my name is Timothy Daly. I'm an Assistant Business Manager with IBW, Local 1249 of Cicero. Local 1249 has well over 3,000 members to date. Our jurisdiction is the entire state of New York, with the exceptions of Long Island and the five boroughs of New York City. We represent electrical linemen, outside telephone line workers, line clearance tree trimmers, along with other classifications. I would like to start by thanking Doreen Harris Chair and Basil Sagos Chair for leading this committee on energy and service officials. Your challenging work is appreciated. The local has three areas of concern, for the most part, of cost, time, and employment. Number one, cost. We are seeing rising inflation to the likes of the early 1980s. Wages are not rising fast enough to keep up. The pandemic, the Russian-Ukraine war, and all the other factors that are fueling inflation rates continue to be problems New Yorkers are facing. If we go by the timeline presented for this transition, we will bring these costs to the public at an extremely higher pace. When are these costs going to stop? The benefit-cost assessment shows a net benefit to the public, but not much of that is a direct savings to the individual. It is a savings, which will not be realized until much further into the future. The plan is going to cost the public so much upfront, most New Yorkers cannot continue to afford to live here. The timeline certainly needs to be adjusted. New York has seen a decrease in its population, and the living expense is one of the direct factors. The plan should include more incentivized ways to decrease the amount of money that New Yorkers will bear. Number two, time. The timing of these changes should be spread out more to show more realistic goals. The current timeline brings about these changes too fast and is not realistic. One reason is there's people who believe the environment is what it is, and there is nothing we can do to stop it. Others believe there's not enough definitive evidence that changes being suggested would bring us the results needed to change the environment. Some folks just don't care. Some people care but feel the plan is too costly. The bottom line is that no matter what your opinion is, there are not enough people in agreement with this plan. The plan needs adjustments to meet everyone's needs and should not be finalized with its current structure. Employment. There are a lot of gas workers across the state that are happy with their career in the industry. They do not want a life-changing career move, especially when there are alternative choices. National Grid recently put out a statement stating we have critical responsibility to lead the clean energy transition for our customers and communities. Also said, just as we are investing in renewables like wind, solar, and decarbonize the energy running through our electric network, we are committing to decarbonize our gas network by transitioning it completely to renewable gas and hydrogen by 2050 or sooner. So why displace all the people?
I need to ask you to please submit the rest of your comments in writing, but thank you. Sean.
Holly Sullivan, Cornell undergraduate student in course, Climate Smart Communities, State and Local Climate Action.
Hi, everyone. My name is Holly Sullivan, and I am a senior biological sciences student at Cornell University. I grew up in Norwich, New York, which is a small town about an hour south of here, and so I care deeply about climate policy in New York State. I have conducted a review of Chapter 9 titled Analysis of the Plan. This chapter was very data and figure-heavy, and so many of my observations are rooted in the clarity and accessibility of these figures. This might not be the most high-stakes chapter of the scoping plan, but data visualization is incredibly important for data interpretation and the communication of trends, and it is imperative that we create our figures in a way that is easily readable to everyone, even those without a science or math background. In this section, initially, we get a description of Figure 4, which showcases greenhouse gas emissions by mitigation strategy. I personally found myself confused when I first looked at this graph. In Figure 4, the key does not line up well with the description of each scenario below it. It may be easier to read if the key said Scenario 1, Scenario 2, and so on, instead of the full scenario title, for instance, accelerated transition away from combustion. The last few figures of this chapter were less confusing than the first. Figures 6, 7, and 8 and 9 are all variations on the same theme, showing the timelines for each of the four scenarios on a typical line graph. The trend line of each is clear, but there is simply too much information stuffed into a small space, and because of this, the graph becomes crowded and the text becomes very small, and even my young eyes have trouble reading it. Additionally, just a quick note, on Figure 9, the waste icon at the end is missing its description. Overall, I wonder if there is a better, clearer way to convey the timelines of each of these scenarios. The chapter then ended with a very good summary of key findings, but I would say focusing on clarity in these graphics is essential, as we are visual creatures, and often we look to figures to better understand the data and trends. I will be submitting these comments in written form. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline.
Jen Duck, International Representative, IBW.
Good evening. My name is Jen Duck. I'm an international representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and I'm born, raised, and reside here in the Syracuse area. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for the time and energy put into the plan. I know it's extensive. I also want to thank the council for allowing organized labor to be at the table by including us on advisory panels and the Just Transition Working Group. At prior public hearings, I have heard comments from those that support our labor unions for us to step up and be a leader, and I'm here to say we are trying. I encourage the continued conversation with organized labor, as the IBW and the other trades are the experts in the field, doing the work that affects and is affected by New York's climate goals. I also want to encourage the continued research into emerging technologies and considering an all-of-the-above approach. We already know the sun doesn't always shine, the wind doesn't always blow, and battery storage is limited. But did you know that it can take over 6,000 gallons of gas to drill one hole for a monopole for a transmission line? That it takes over 3 million solar panels to replace one nuclear reactor? And that the South Fork Wind Project that just recently broke ground, that's a great project, that just recently broke ground, will power only 70,000 of the almost 500,000 homes on Long Island? Don't get me wrong, the renewables that New York has been building are a great start, but it is clear we do not yet have what it takes to replace our current reliable energy sources. Remember in the 80s, when plastic bags started replacing paper because it was thought to be better for the environment? Well, look where we are today. The idea of replacing paper with plastic sounded good, even made sense in some arguments, with the right argument, but it was clearly not the solution. I would hate to see the same realization a few years down the road, only this time much more detrimental and at a much larger cost to New York jobs and New York communities. I look forward to the Climate Action Council's continued conversation with the skilled trades and the IBW. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, Sean, hang on. Group 13? Group 14?
I'm on group 11.
Oh, did I miss 11? I'm so sorry. 11. I was ready for dinner. Sean.
Helen Walter Terrononi, Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigeration Institute, Mandana, New York.
You get 10 points for saying my name right. Okay. So, Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigeration Institute, AHRI, represents more than 90% of the manufacturers of HVACR equipment, so heating, ventilation, air conditioning, refrigeration equipment, including heat pumps, and electric heat pumps, which will be used in New York's scoping plan to reduce the carbon footprint in New York. As you know, in the development of this plan, greenhouse gas As you know, in the development of this plan, greenhouse gas reductions-- balancing greenhouse gas reductions with affordable access to lifesaving heating and disinfecting hot water is more challenging than can be considered even the 100 pages of the draft. As an industry, we believe there are some important considerations that must be made when assessing electrification and building decarbonization policies. HRI hopes to be a resource and partner in New York's decarbonization efforts and the development of measured steps that will both achieve carbon emissions and increase the likelihood of success in achieving these targets while maintaining access to critical services. There are a number of important considerations that NYSERTA should incorporate into its thinking about the scoping plan to avoid some unintended negative consequences, and I'm just going to give you a couple of examples. The high cost of conversion could drive homeowners to repair rather than replace less efficient equipment. Historically proven, properly priced kitchen-table incentives, where a contractor talks to a homeowner, could reduce this risk, especially for low- and medium-income families. Addressing high heating and cooling loads in buildings, as Clean Heat mentioned earlier, will prevent destabilization of electricity grids and any additional assets' needs that could be-- create significant added cost. A regulatory framework should allow for the innovation and corrections, or to address unanticipated issues, such as supply chain issues that we have recently seen with low global warming potential products and their associated insulation. Finally, success in reducing greenhouse gases will depend on building support of stakeholders to make reasonable trade-offs without losing access to critical services. I will provide more details in our written comments, and we appreciate this opportunity and thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Say yay on you, from Syracuse.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to emphasize the necessary and urgent need for important actions to be outlined in the CIC scoping plan in order to meet the goals of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Because a climate issue is one that's only getting exponentially more drastic, any amount of time and money spent to ameliorate the issue is a worthy investment on our futures and those of future generations. Changes in our technological lifestyle need to be made, like encouraging increased use of electronic vehicles over gas vehicles by making charging stations more accessible and creating free charging stations around the state. In New York, the second-largest source of greenhouse gases emissions is transportation. According to the 2021 statewide GHG emissions report by the Department of Environmental Conservation in New York, 28% of the emissions in New York was from transportation, and 32% of the emissions was from buildings. New York City has already implemented the All-Electric Buildings Act that, starting in 2024, prohibits buildings constructed with gas hookups. The scoping plan should enforce this All-Electric Buildings Act in the entire state and plan on replacing traditional heating systems with electric pumps in at least 2 million homes by 2030. A third change should be made by including funding for the research and development of battery storage and the acquisition of batteries. Storing renewable energy that can be saved then used efficiently when it is needed will reduce dependency on fossil fuels. These changes have been researched to show that they'll make an impactful change on our planet. There are feasible ways to alleviate this current situation, so we need to implement them. Since the planet is changing because of our actions, we need to make changes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Maleka Delgado, Syracuse University student.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the Climate Action Council as a student of Syracuse University. Thank you for your leadership in addressing the raging climate crisis in the state of New York. I was first introduced to this serious issue in my work with the New York Public Interest Group, but while I defer to the environmental experts to discern the causes of dismounting changes in the climate, I, like many students, am concerned about the state's investment in our future and our ability to gain access to understandable climate material. As a first-generation student of color, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act gives me hope for the future generations to come. Investments in infrastructure, transportation, community financial support towards electrically-powered innovations can subdue climate change's worsening impacts on students who have yet to enter the higher education sphere. In order to do so, the state should match New York City's evolving electric building legislation to mandate all new building construction to include electric cooking, heating, and cooling and water in 2024. My family has a long history in the state of New York, making it feel more like home than where my parents live in Massachusetts. My grandparents immigrated here from Puerto Rico in the 1980s, but yet they still do not speak English, and the language barriers bar them from understanding policies that impact their lives every day. I stand here before you today to advocate for understandable and inclusive information material for this reason. By creating real-time dashboards and gathering annual data, such as the climate report cards, residents can keep up the key metrics of the progress with the Climate Act and significant advances in their communities. Alongside my concerns for our collective future, I worry for their health and quality of life as they end the near of it. The scoping plan that coincides with the Climate Act has founded that decarbonization of the state can substantially benefit air quality. The climate creates the environment we live our everyday lives in, and to avoid further endangerment of our environment and our planet, we need to take huge action. The Climate Act ensures we consider citizens of today and the generations of tomorrow in our fight for-- to protect our one and only Earth, and even if this act doesn't pass today, it needs to be in the forefront of our legislative minds for tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. Caroline?
Gregory Peterson, Business Agent, Boilermakers Local Five.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Greg Peterson. I'm a union rep for the Boilermakers Local Number Five. We cover all of New York and have offices in Oswego, Albany, Buffalo, and New York City, representing over 700 members and their families who call New York home. We build and maintain the power plants across the state. We will be one of the many skilled trades that will be tasked with building a clean energy system here in New York State. Dependability and affordability must be prioritized in any energy plan being considered. That demands that all forms of energy be considered. That would include wind, solar, battery technologies, and hydrogen. However, to provide the needed baseload for reliability and affordability, nuclear, natural gas, and others must be considered as well. New technologies, such as carbon capture, which I was glad to hear in your plan, is definitely viable. A full 100% of carbon emissions can be captured and stored and put back underground where they came from. That technology is fully developed and in use in many places, including the United States and Canada. With that technology alone, you have abundant fuel sources, thousands of high-paying infrastructure jobs, and zero-carbon emissions, along with a reliable power grid, which is exactly what we need. With this technology, it gives everyone concerned exactly what they're looking for. New York has some of the most expensive electricity prices in the nation. We can bring the cost down by producing more electricity in-state. In closing, we need an energy strategy to bridge the transition timeframe to 100% renewables. We cannot have capacity and reliability with renewables alone. The technology simply isn't there yet. Let's have a fact-based climate plan discussion that's not based on climate change fears and work together on a smooth transition to a cleaner energy system that prioritizes affordability and reliability, something all New Yorkers deserve.
Thank you. Before you go, Sean, are there any other speakers, registered speakers with cards with even numbers? None? Okay. Then why don't we split this group? Sean?
John Menberg, Liverpool, New York.
Good evening to the council, and thank you for taking the time to hear the comments. I'm here as both a-- or as a disabled veteran, a student of SU and ESF, and also as a concerned citizen and father for my nine-year-old son who is celebrating his birthday today. Your plan is multifaceted, covers very many areas, and I'd like you to take that approach within the individual topics, specifically in Section 16 and 18, and ask you to be proactive rather than reactive, to push for EVs, both in 2030s, the 40s, and 50s for the implementation. Yet, on page-- sorry. On page 244, you talk about research end-of-life-- the DEC should research end-of-life management for difficult-to-manage materials, difficult-to-manage materials such as solar panels and EV batteries. We need to address this infrastructure before putting EVs into place. It's kind of like having, you know, the cart before the horse. Doesn't make much sense. That's how we got into this predicament now. And to address the disadvantaged communities, you talk about in Section 18 for the gas, for the methane, using public funds as a last resort for the state to work with ways for the oil and gas industry for contributing, reducing emissions from the methane sources. I ask that that should be strictly on the oil and gas industry and not using public funds, taking those funds away from disadvantaged communities where it could be better spent. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Caroline?
Brett Barry, Senior Policy Advisor, Clean Energy.
Hi. Good evening. Clean Energy applauds the diligent work of the Climate Action Council in crafting the draft scoping plan and requests the inclusion of a clean fuel standard in the final list of recommendations. Clean Energy is North America's largest provider of renewable natural gas vehicle fuel, RNG. RNG is increasingly derived from the capture of fugitive emissions from the agricultural sector and has been certified by the California Air Resources Board as a carbon-net-negative fuel under their LCFS program. Our customers include major heavy fleets such as UPS and Waste Management, and recently Clean Energy signed a contract to fuel 800 of New York MTA's transit buses. The clean emission reduction goals set forth in the draft scoping plan are as admirable as they are aggressive. To attain these goals will require a swift transformation of the transportation sector to clean fuels. As the goals are emissions-focused, so should the policies to achieve them. The plan must not rely on technological speculation, but rather embrace an approach which will support the cleanest viable option at any given point in time for each of the numerous vehicle applications. Failure to include this type of flexibility will likely result in diesel maintaining its dominance and the emission reduction goals of the plan not being achieved. Clean Energy applauds the Climate Action Council for including a clean fuel standard as a policy option in the draft scoping plan. A CFS takes into account lifecycle emissions. By its very nature, it requires results and provides the flexibility to achieve those results, as it is technology-neutral. Outside of administrative costs, the policy is also budget-neutral. We ask that the Climate Action Council wholeheartedly support and recommend adoption of a CFS in the final scoping plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Gary Schoonmaker, Citizen.
Thank you. I'm 70 years old. I've been a lifelong resident of New York State. I'm a graduate of ESF. I'm a licensed landscape architect. I was an employee of Niagara Mohawk for over 18 years, doing environmental work on transmission, substations, generation. The house I built in 1978 was designed and built to be energy-efficient and had a heat pump. We also have solar panels. I have operated my own business for over 40 years, doing hydrodevelopment, environmental consulting, and real estate development. I was a member and chairman of Onondaga County's Environmental Management Council when we did the Resource Recovery Plan, the Onondaga Lake Water Quality Improvements, SEACER Implementation, and the Bottle Deposit Bill. I mention these here not to promote myself, but to let you know that my presentation today is with a considerable background of education and experience related to your What you just heard is the sound of the future of New York State and the freedoms that these citizens of this state have if you implement the plan you have proposed in the It is impractical to do what you've said you're going to do. When we transitioned from kerosene to electrification, people did it because they wanted to do it. It wasn't imposed on them by the government. When we transitioned from horses to automobiles, people transitioned because they wanted to. It was better for them to do it. They didn't have to be told to do it. They didn't have to be coerced to do it, but that's what this plan does. It coerces us to change. The whole plan that you got does not allow-- is not able to be done. If you look at just the transmission, generation, and distribution of electricity that you're proposing to implement in New York State, it cannot be done in the timeframe that you're talking about.
I want to thank you for your comments. Rest can be in writing. Caroline?
Mona Parati, from Clinton, New York.
I'm speaking today as a member of my local Climate Smart Community Task Force, as a retired registered nurse, a union member, and a mother and grandmother, and because the future of young people on this climate-changing planet is what motivates me every day. My daughters and my grandchildren have all struggled with asthma, and for over 25 years I was a public school nurse. I am intimately and professionally aware of the impact that burning fossil fuels has on the respiratory health of children, particularly those from disadvantaged communities. Research has shown that when fossil fuels are removed from the transportation and other sectors, the public health benefits and human lives and spending will be immense. I most strongly urge that you keep focused on these keystone underpinnings of the CLCPA. First, justice, public health, and a just transition. All must be prioritized by protecting the health and well-being of low-income and communities of color, and by including strong labor standards, workforce funding, and strong public health guidelines. Second, there can be no false solutions. There is no place in the scoping plan for green hydrogen, renewable natural gas, waste incineration, biofuels, or unproven technologies. There is only room for renewable, zero-emission technologies that work, like solar and wind. But large industry coalitions are lobbying hard with advertising, like this full-page ad from National Grid in the New York Times on April 19th, that confuse the public with self-serving distractions. I'm sorry. Don't use that. Okay. There must be dedicated-- third, there must be dedicated annual funding for the massive shift to adjust and renewable clean energy economy. At present, the CLCPA is an unfunded Band-Aid, and the legislature has failed to take a single step to provide any funding. The scoping plan must contain a very strong recommendation for at least $10 to $15 billion annually, in line with the NYSERTA and other reports, hopefully using an economy-wide pollution fee that has been suggested as the most equitable approach.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Sean?
Luann Meyer, President, New York Chapter, SWANA.
Solid Waste Association of North America, or SWANA, is an organization of solid-waste professionals committed to environmental stewardship and the advancement of sustainable environmental technologies. Although we will be submitting comments in writing, I want to touch on five important concepts at today's hearing. Number one, landfills and waste-energy facilities provide an essential public service because they provide for the safe and secure disposal of waste materials that are not feasible to reuse, recover, or recycle. Indeed, a secure landfill or waste-energy facility is the best option to manage waste, as our industry has made significant investments to ensure that landfills and waste-energy facilities are designed, constructed, and operated to protect public health, safety, and the environment while minimizing greenhouse gas emissions. It is important for the Climate Action Council to acknowledge that the waste industry is part of the solution to climate change and not considered a contributor to climate change. The final scoping plan needs to acknowledge that waste-energy infrastructure will play an important role in the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in New York State. Number three, the final scoping plan should consider landfill gas-to-energy facilities and renewable natural gas from landfill gas as a mitigation measure for landfill gas capture. Biofuels from waste-to-energy, such as renewable natural gas and landfill gas, should be recognized as a valid renewable energy sources. Efforts should be devoted to their strategic use along with wind, solar, and hydropower. The final scoping plan should acknowledge the progress the waste industry has already and will continue to make as it relates to greenhouse gas emissions. The draft scoping plan lacks information on the environmental concerns associated with emerging contaminants and land application of digistate as a soil amendment. The final scoping plan should consider the current studies underway related to emerging contaminants and how the waste sector is posing to be a solution to these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Peter King, of Syracuse, New York.
Good evening. I will submit full comments at a later time, but I appreciate your opportunity to be heard. I've been with many groups in Syracuse, Citizens Activity, participating in the discussion around the IAD-1 project in Syracuse, and I am glad to say that the community has come to a consensus and the DOT has agreed on a preferred alternative for replacing IAD-1 with a community grid. I find the 80-- I find the IAD-1 question to be a valid metaphor, possibly, for the Climate Act in improving local and environmental quality of life and also with providing Syracuse residents with significant job opportunity on the IAD-1 project, and yes, by focusing the discourse on moving people, not cars. I've run some brief numbers on the public transportation, and I find that actually ridership may be increasing and possibly not only the lower-income but also wealthier people. My immediate comments are for supporting the draft scoping plan overall. The basic design seems favorable for disadvantaged communities who bear the brunt of fossil fuels' negative impacts and who can also benefit most from the possible job growth and will also often live in urban situations where all these effects are intensified. So, as has occurred with IAD-1 projects, I favor a strong job-training program based on NISERTA's Energy Hub concept and also involving unions, municipalities, and other local workforce providers down to the community centers. I suggest taking a more holistic view on upgrading old houses, as we have a lot of them in central New York, and you're going to need to think about that, including the old wiring. A healthy homes approach might be useful for attending other issues such as lead and asbestos. As far as the overall goals and means for accomplishing the Climate Act--
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to submit the rest of your comments in writing. Thank you. Sean?
Scott Hedrick, Executive Director, Renewable Energy Group.
So, I think we're at the end. I think most of us have been lucky to be sitting this whole time. I just want to thank Sean and Caroline because they've stood.
And they're settling with the target?
Yes, absolutely. Renewable Energy Group is one of North America's largest manufacturers of biomass-based diesel, and while REG is headquartered in the Midwest, I want to share that I grew up here in central New York, over in Utica. My father and sister still reside there, and frankly, it's kind of nice to be home. We have nine production facilities across the U.S., and REG alone, in the last two years, has produced over 1 billion gallons of lower-carbon biofuel, resulting in over 9 million metric tons of carbon emissions avoided. I just want to stress that again. Those are carbon emissions avoided. We're very pleased that the scoping plan includes the strategic use of low-carbon biofuels. As I said, they bring real and meaningful reductions to carbon emissions today, and I think that's important to acknowledge. And while there's probably not much of a question that there could be more details to the scoping plan or there could be potential improvements, no plan is perfect, particularly at its birth. But this plan is built on the work of other states. It represents a good starting point, and you and the commission and NISERTA should be commended for that. REG is going to be pleased to submit additional written comments detailing our areas of support. Lastly, and as I guess the second-to-last person, I do want to thank you all for sitting here and listening today. It means long days for all of you, extra work, I know, but it's really important to the process, and I think at the end of the day, we get better public policy for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Robert Conway, retired criminal investigator, U.S. EPA, and National Park Service Law Enforcement Park Ranger with the Adirondack Mountain Club Conservation Committee Chair.
Good evening. Thanks for letting everyone speak tonight. I wasn't going to speak, but then one of the individuals from the industry came up here and brought a point forward that I thought was very applicable, and that is that if you want industry to come on board with this, the environmentalists need to work with industry. And I was thinking back to my time in graduate school at Michigan State in the Environmental Engineering Program. Michigan State tried to set up a program where graduate students worked with industry, small industry, that didn't have the capabilities to transition to renewable energy equipment, technologies, things like that. Here in upstate New York, we have wonderful university systems. We had young talent here today in the form of the students that we can use to help communities that don't have the expertise and to help industries transition to cleaner renewable energy sources. As a criminal investigator for the U.S. EPA, I work with the DEC closely on a number of cases, asbestos cases, Clean Air Act cases, Clean Water Act cases, wetland cases. All these issues show up in your document, and I will be making further comments on those, but I think everybody's tired tonight, and with that, I'll let you guys go. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. I want to thank the audience for being so respectful of each other and listening to all of the comments. We're going to close this hearing now. Have a good night.